Good evening. I'd like to call to order the January eighth, twenty twenty four organizational special meeting work session of the York County School Board. Well, I hope everyone took time over the holiday break to enjoy their family and friends. And as we enter the new year, it's a time for us to reevaluate our priorities and remain optimistic about the future. But moving forward, we remain steadfast in our commitment to providing excellent learning opportunities for our students and like to welcome our three newest board members here tonight. As a reminder, I'll read the YCSD mission statement. The mission statement of the York County School Division is to ensure every student is valued, supported, and challenged through learning experiences which prepare them for a successful future. Now, as we move into our organizational business, I would ask Dr. Shandor to handle this portion of the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Good evening, board members. So to open the meeting, the floor is open to nominations for board chair.
I'd like to nominate Jimmy Richardson as board chair.
I'd like to nominate Linda Fairman as board chair.
So we have a nomination for Mr. Richardson and we have, and Ms. Goodwin nominates Ms. Fairman. Are there any other nominations? All right, hearing none, the floor is now closed for nominations. So, thank you. So Mr. Jimmy Richardson and Ms. Linda Fairman have been both nominated for, to serve as board chair and no additional nominations were received. Ms. Ford will now poll the board as to Mr. Richardson and Ms. Fairman. Ms. Ford?
Yes, we have a nomination for Mrs. Fairman as board chair and we have a nomination for Mr. Richardson as board chair. Board members, when your name is called, please state the name of the candidate who you would like to vote. Mrs. Fairman?
Linda Fairman.
Mr. Pyavich?
Linda Fairman.
Mr. Richardson?
Mr. Richardson.
Ms. Goodwin?
Linda Fairman.
Mr. Schaefer?
Uh, Mr. Richardson.
Okay, board members, Mrs. Fairman has won the vote with three. Mr. Richardson got two votes, so Mrs. Fairman is now our new board chair.
Congratulations to Ms. Linda Fairman. Let's give her a round of applause. All right, at this point, Ms. Fairman is going to pres- preside over the meeting.
So for the nominations for the?
Vice chair?
For the vice chair.
Correct, yes, yes.
Ms. Fairman, I would suggest that we take a five-minute recess if we can just to reorganize and reposition.
Do you want to reposition now or reposition after the vice chair?
We can do after the vice chair. That might be easiest. That way it's all, we know who's where.
All at once. I think that'll work. All right, oops. Okay, the floor is now open for nominations for board vice chair.
I'd like to nominate Jimmy Richardson.
Jimmy Richardson has been nominated by Mr. Schaefer.
And I would like to nominate Kim Goodwin.
Mrs. Goodwin has been nominated by Mr. Pyavich. Are there any further nominations from the floor? Hearing no further nominations, the nominations for vice chair are closed.
Okay, so board members, when your name is called, please state the name of the candidate who would like to be board chair. Mrs. Fairman?
Kim Goodwin.
Mr. Pyavich?
Kim Goodwin.
Mr. Richardson?
Mr. Richardson.
Ms. Goodwin?
Kim Goodwin.
Mr. Schaefer?
Jimmy Richardson.
Board members, the vote is now Mr. Richardson two and the winner of the vote is Ms. Goodwin with three. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And we can have a round of applause for. And the chair will handle any nomination, or not nominations, motion to recess so that we can reposition everybody since we just had the elections. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, so actually the recess should be what, for about?
Five minutes.
Five minutes? So we'll do that. We'll recess for five minutes, reposition chairs, and then we'll come back to our meeting. Right, I call the recess end and the meeting back into order. Uh, the next order of business will be regarding the approval of resolution twenty four oh one, approving the county school board of York County, Virginia organizational business for calendar year twenty twenty four. Um, the next organizational item is what I just said, resolution number twenty four oh one. School board members have had the opportunity to review this. I know several of us have taken notes on things, trying to get up to speed to be ready for today. Dr. Shandor, if you want to bring us up to speed on your side of it.
Sure, just wanted to ask just a couple of questions. One, you have the board calendar in front of you, so you've had a chance to look at those dates. Um, you have committee assignments, I believe, in front of you as well, with some descriptors. You've had a chance to hopefully review that information as well. So if you'll take a look at those two items and perhaps have discussion related to the committee assignments to see who would like to do which. And Ms. Ford is available to pencil in names as we finalize.
Well, and in dealing with this resolution, it is quite a detailed resolution with a lot of different sections to it. I, I really would like to see this split out to handle each individual thing and, um, considering that we've looked at some sections in detail, as well as other sections were brand new, with this resolution, um, do I hear a motion to handle these as separate items? I move to, uh, separate the resolution into separate parts. Okay. Based a later date or individually tonight. Is there a second?
Second then.
Okay, there's a motion as second to separate this to handle each individual item rather than voting on the overall resolution as a whole. Uh, is there any discussion?
Um, I'm just wondering, what, what is it that we need to separate again then?
Well, um, parts of it are some questions that new members had, as well as dealing with some lists that are needed before, um, it can be voted on and approved and, and basically handling, um, transparency for the community so that we can handle things all at once rather than just an overall approval and one fell swoop. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of handling the resolution, section by section, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Um, taking a look at the resolution, um, the first part of things, just handle the different codes. Those of you following at home, if you go online, you will be able to see the resolution. Uh, if you click on the, um, let's have document icon there, you can take a look at that. There was one thing to explain to the board at the bottom of page one. It's a one, two, three, four, five, six, the seventh, whereas, section one dash ten of York County ordinance twenty three three, centralized purchasing policy of York County authorizes the county school board of York County, Virginia Board, to designate an official to approve without prior authorization of the board procurement actions in amounts up to fifty thousand dollars. And section three ten of the same ordinance permits certain modifications of fixed price contracts without the board's prior approval. Could we have an explanation to the board of what that actually covers?
Sure. Um, either Mr. Bowen or Ms. Barry, if you could, could you share your thoughts on that?
It's, it's authorizing the board to, to take that, or authorizing staff with that prior authorization from the board to, to execute a contract. Typically, what happens is that when there is a contract that exceeds fifty thousand, uh, fifty thousand dollars or more, we bring that to the board. However, there are times, if there is a situation that comes up and that we need to act on it in an emergency fashion, that we will act on that and then we will bring that to the board at the next meeting. So it's not an attempt to circumvent the, the process or the, um, the authority of the board. It's just the process of, of getting that, of getting that action done, knowing that, um, it needs to be done. And typically, when that happens, the superintendent is talking to the board, um, or I'm reaching out to the board. Um, you will see at, on occasion, that at work sessions, we will have, um, an action item to, to approve and it's most likely going to be a procurement action because we can't wait until.
End of the month.
At the end of the month to get it in front of you. But sometimes they're on occasion and it's very rare that we have, that we have to take that action between a work session and, um, the regular session. Typically, when it happens the most, it's in the summer because we don't have board meetings in the summer unless there's a special meeting already on, on schedule. So we have one meeting in, in June, little meetings in July, and then one meeting in August. And so there are times that we have to take those actions and wait for the next board meeting.
One quick question. Uh, it says for section three ten, excuse me, or the same ordinance permits certain modifications. So it's not like no, like anything up to fifty thousand dollars, but it's certain modifications. So like, you know, do we know what doesn't permit, what does?
Um, I'm, I'm not, I'm unsure about the certain modifications, but what generally happens is we will, um, on a, on a contract that's been approved by the board, um, there comes a change order. This happens during the construction process, which in the summertime is when the majority of our construction occurs. So when we don't have those meetings, we, um, we are authorized to increase the price up to twenty five percent of, of what's been approved by the board. Um, and then we get that back in front of the board at then our next meeting. So it just allows us to, to make that adjustment, um, uh, and just for the sake of time.
And if I could explain one thing too, with the, one time that I remember that happening was the one-to-one initiative during the, uh, the pandemic. Uh, when we had to buy laptop computers like pretty quick. If we didn't get on the bandwagon, we were behind. Other school divisions were getting in front of us for getting those, uh, those devices. Uh, but they did call each one of the board members and let us know what was going on, what they were doing. Um, and we were all pretty much in agreement individually until we met, uh, to vote on it officially.
I remember that. Tried to block it out, but I remember that. But, uh, and the fifty thousand dollars is just, it's just like any company, uh, has certain authorizations that they are allowed to do on their own. And, uh, and like I said, it's always been brought to us, uh, because I think one of them was a, was some radios at one point too. It was under fifty thousand, it was only like thirty-five thousand and all. We were totally informed of it and everything, but, uh, it was go ahead and do it, yeah.
I think the concern here, um, that I was hearing from some people as well as some of the constituents is that since it doesn't say emergency and it doesn't say, you know, in the rare instance of during the summer, that it needs to specifically state that because there was a question of, are there repetitive contracts that would be included in this and renewing procurement contracts, um, say for memberships or whatever, that would automatically be renewed under this provision without letting the board know that they were renewing these particular, um, memberships or contracts?
So we bring back to the board every year, um, a contract. So if it's been approved, um, last year and we're continuing whatever that contract or service or membership is and it exceeds fifty thousand, it will be back in front of the board again.
But if it's less than fifty, then it doesn't come to the board?
If it's less than fifty, we, we do not bring it before the board. And that, and that's the county's purchasing policy.
It'd be a lot.
Yes.
It would, it would be a lot. It'd be significant.
And I will say, the purchasing policy the county has does follow the Public Procurement Act, which is the state law. And that's where the fifty thousand's coming from. That's in the state law.
Right. I think there was, uh, there was concern that there would just be automatic renewal of some contracts without the board having the opportunity, since it's a new board, to take a look and see if we really wanted to renew those particular contracts or memberships.
And purchasing does do some contracts, especially for things like, uh, occupational therapist provider contracts. They will enter into a contract that's for one year with the option to renew for five to ten, depends on the provider because some providers are hard to get, those many years. But it's still, it's our discretion to renew, so it's not automatic. We don't do automatic renewals.
Okay, so we don't have automatic renewals and, um, we don't have automatic memberships, that that would be, that would come before the, the whole board to decide?
It, it, if the membership is less than fifty thousand, it doesn't, we don't bring it to the board. There, there are, most of our purchases fall below that threshold. When we talk fifty thousand dollars, we're ma- we're talking just about all of our construction. Um, and we're talking a lot of our IT, um, contracts, uh, some of our operational contracts. Trying to think of one, um, the CHKD contract for our athletic trainers. That, that's an annual contract that we bring back before the board. Um, I think it runs seventy-five thousand dollars. Those, those are the ones that we bring before the board. But if it's, um, I'm part of a group, um, FASBO, if it's two thousand dollars, we don't bring those to the board to approve. Because we do have a number of, the majority of our purchases are below fifty thousand.
Yeah, I think that's what the concern was, so the board could take a look at some of those, especially different memberships of things to make sure that we want to continue membership. And since most of those fall below the fifty thousand, they would automatically have been done. Is there any way to handle those? Maybe provide the, the board members a list of what would fall under that and/or add into this, uh, the provision that this is under emergency circumstances? That it's when something ha- happens emergency-wise in between meetings? Can that be added?
That, well, that's your decision as a board.
I think we need to add that language. I, I feel better adding that language in and definitely seeing the list.
Are there specific contracts you're concerned or looking at?
No, just in general.
Just, just in general, general.
Cause I mean, we do one with VSBA and I know you're doing training different for VSBA, which is okay.
Yeah, but I'd like to see the.
We do a contract with them because we get, we get a lot of, we get, uh, sample policies. We get, uh, legal advice from them, that sort of.
Right, but my job as board is to have oversight. So to have oversight, I need to know what I'm overseeing and what, what we have.
Yeah.
So that would give me that option to see it. But, you know, just for my edification and knowing what, when I s- when I see this, this is what I'm.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think it's gonna be a lot, but, yeah, I'm okay with that. Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Can, can you give me an example of membership?
Um, just any of the associations and things like that. Since we, since we haven't seen the list, we don't, it's one of those situations, you don't know what you don't know.
Sure.
And so you want, we want to make sure, since one of the things that, you know, the constituents were concerned about was how money is being spent, where it's being spent, things like that, and if we're covering different organizations that we're no longer, you know, really connected with or anything like that or that are just getting rolled over automatically under provision like this.
So if we. Wait, I'm sorry, I, I just need clarification because as we head into the end of the fiscal year, um, during the May and June process, we are issuing blanket purchase orders for a number of vendors that we have. There's, I, I want to say there's at least a dozen, um, probably two dozen vendors just in operations vehicle and transportation that we deal with on a regular basis. Um, are those the ones that you want, some of them are over fifty thousand and we bring those to you, but if they're under fifty, you want, do you want to see all of these agreements? Cause what this will do is, this will bog down operations for, for us. So if we can narrow or more clearly understand what, um, what do you want to see, associations and?
How, how, how is it to get the, like, just the list of the contracts, like, you know, that we have like that? Not, not every single agreement, but like, you know, just the list. And then if we see like, you know, through those things, like, you know, maybe we can inquire just specific contract.
Yes, so we, we can run a purchase order report out of our financial system and we can go back to the board.
That's, that's, yeah, yeah. We don't want to bog you down. That's not the goal, but we want to get, you know, be able to see what it is this needs right here.
Okay.
When we say these contracts under fifty thousand, what are we looking at? So that would be great.
Just the list, yeah.
Purchase order report.
Yeah, purchase order report.
Bill, is that a monthly thing or is that, is that something that would be, uh, you'd pull for a quarterly or, or all?
Um, of course, the bulk of it's done, um, in May and June, but we're, uh, their, their new purchase orders every year.
I think if you, well, the year. Yeah, if you provide it's like a list for the whole year, that'll give us like, you know, what it is and then it's like, you know, the dates that they're gonna renew kind of thing, so.
So we can, we can give you, um, twenty-three, all the purchase orders from twenty-three and all the ones that we've done, so.
That works.
So, yeah.
Okay, I guess I can enter, uh, we'll entertain a motion, um, if you'd like to table this until the, was it January twenty-nine meeting?
Well, um.
For this particular section until the board has provided a list.
Yeah, I, it might be, just a suggestion, we may want to talk about the dates. If you approve your calendar, um, then we can solidify that thing right there once we're, to put that.
Okay. So if you want to bounce ahead to, um, let's see. It's the school board work sessions and regular meetings document. Um, left side, for those watching on TV, left side is the blue, the right side is the green, with the work session dates and the regular meeting dates, the locations, the times, and all of that. Are there any questions regarding that from the board members? I don't have any.
I don't have any. Fantastic.
Yeah. The, I did have, um, someone had let me know that they didn't understand what all of the, the letter abbreviations and the acronyms are for, uh, all of our constituents at home. Are you, is there any way to?
Absolutely.
Identify what these are?
Yeah.
I mean, I know what VASS and VASBO is, but.
Yep.
Everybody else looks and goes, huh.
Well, we'll make that modification.
I would make a suggestion too, NSBA, um, we haven't been to an NSBA conference for several years now. I don't know that we really need to.
Want to strike that?
Leave that on that. Yeah. The, the new one that the state's looking at is COSBO, but, um.
It's a COSBO.
Yeah, it's a consortium of school board associations is the one that twenty-seven of the states started with Texas, I think, went to.
Can you spell that?
Consortium.
No, not consortium. Thank you, Mr. Richardson. You said CA.
COSBO.
COSBO.
COSBO, it's the acronym for consortium.
C.A.S.C.A. B.A.?
Yeah.
And I'll spell cons- I'll spell consortium after the B's.
Thank you.
And once again, that's a reason why we need what the, the alphabet soup stands for.
Yes, we will, we will do those at the bottom. Thank you.
Okay, that's, that sounds great.
Yep.
And handling this individually, are there any other further questions regarding the calendar for the work sessions and regular meetings?
Board retreat, is that determined now or later?
Um, you can have that discussion now. You can discuss it later. I mean, it's really up to you.
Yeah. I would suggest a board retreat. I think I've mentioned it to the new board members. It's a good way to, to do a lot of this discussion too. But I would suggest we do one again.
Yeah.
If we can come to a date.
We can, we can discuss dates like, you know, what, what month would be good to start with, like, in February or?
Uh, probably after February twelfth.
After February twelfth.
Yeah, well, the, we, I presented the budget to y'all on February twelfth, so between February twelfth and, you know, that next week or a couple of weeks after. Mid, mid to late February would be, would be good, if possible. Take this sooner than that.
Friday good for most people or are we looking at a Saturday? Or I'm not sure what y'all's schedules are to board members.
I can make Fridays work.
I'm pretty.
I'm okay with Fridays.
Um, just, we're looking at Fridays maybe in February, sixteen, twenty-third or Fridays.
I'm good with sixteenth.
Or a, board retreat?
Board retreat, yeah.
Yeah, just getting my calendar. Sorry. Too many things as I have space. Sixteenth is fine.
If I, if I could just ask, is it, the twenty-third may be better for, if you, if y'all can make the twenty-third work, it might be better for, um, staff prep, just because we're getting to the budget.
Right after.
Uh, to have the budget on Monday and then have to meet that Friday. If there's a way we could possibly do the twenty-third, I would ask it.
I'm okay with twenty-third.
Twenty-third's fine.
Consider that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Bill, those are very hesitant, yes. So, wha- uh, can we use this as a placeholder and then?
Sure.
Yes.
Figure it out afterwards.
Yeah, board chair, yeah, can determine where, whether what.
Okay.
Details.
That sounds fun. I would say, um, we'll entertain a motion to accept the school board work sessions and regular meetings calendar with tentative February twenty-third is the board retreat. Did I hear a motion?
Motion.
Yeah. Second?
Second.
Jimmy said, uh, Mr. Richardson said it, sorry about that.
That's for your part.
Any discussion further? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes, the calendar is set. Pause was for shifting papers on the way through here. Sure. Um, so for the next one, I think I've got it. Uh, we have the York County School Board Committee Assignments section, um, with this.
Yep.
The different organizations where a school board member is a representative on it is HRET A, the WHRO, uh, New Horizons Regional Educational Center, Outstanding Youth Selection Committee, Virginia School Boards Association, York County School Division, um, the Health Advisory Committee, the York County School Division Special Education Advisory Committee, uh, York County School Division Career and Technical Education Advisory Committee, York County, uh, School Division Gifted Education Advisory Committee, and the York Foundation for Public Education. There are comments already on here from some members who want to be on certain committees.
I think the, the ones that are printed on here are ones we're already on the committees already and we're willing, I'm willing to stay on mine. But I wanted to point out, the Virginia School Boards Association, at the annual convention, um, as a delegate, you get a chance to vote on legislative priorities and that sort of thing, and it's typically the chair and the vice chair uh, that represented that, and that's in November, um, up in Williamsburg, so.
Yeah, I was in this year.
Yeah. Cause, um, cause I ended up having to do a regional, uh, thing, so Mark represented the, uh, the board at that one. But, um, typically, it's the board chair, vice chair for that one line.
Okay, thank you for the information on that. So Mr. Richardson, you have on here the HRET A, WHRO. Mr. Schaefer, I've got down here that you are on the York Foundation for Public Education?
Mm-hmm.
Is that one still good to go on that one? Sounds good. Um, so.
So I would like to be alternate for the WHRO. And I'd like to be, uh, represented for the New Horizons and for the Career and Technical Education.
All righty, so, uh, we have those two filled. Ms. Goodwin? Um, I would be interested in doing the Health Advisory Committee as well as Gifted Education Committee.
Did you say gifted?
Gifted Education Advisor. Mm-hmm. All righty, and that leaves Special Education Advisory Committee, and that was one of the ones that I had circled, so.
Okay. There you go.
I think that covers everything. Who's on the Outstanding Youth Selection Committee?
Yeah, we have a.
We have to, yeah, that's one slot that still needs to be filled. Ah, that's a, I would be more than happy to do that since my son was a youth commissioner way back in two thousand one, two thousand two.
Yay, okay.
Perfect.
So I think that fills all of the committee assignments.
Do you have a backup for the foundation?
An alternate for the foundation?
No, we don't. Oh, we do need an alternate for York Foundation for Public Education. Mr. Schaefer?
No, it's you.
No, it's you.
We need, we need, we need to alter the, you're representative, we're looking for the alternate.
What? We just have an alternate.
Oh, the alternate, yeah. There, there hadn't been one.
I can do it.
Yeah.
This will be dead.
Hey, Kim, you won't have to do anything. I, I go to all the meetings and all that, so that's cool.
No, it's fine. I've, I'm. Sure.
Just in case. That sounds good. Uh, I think just for the, the process, um, to approve the committee assignments as just signed up, um, HRET A, WHRO, the representative is, uh, Mr. Richardson, the alternate is Mr. Pyavich. New Horizons Regional Educational Center, um, representative is Mr. Pyavich, the alternate is Mr. Shandor. The Outstanding Youth Selection Committee is, uh, representative is Mrs. Fairman, alternate is Mr. Schaefer. Virginia School Board Association, um, we've learned typically that's the chairman and the vice chair, uh, that will be up in Williamsburg, it looks like. We'll get more information on that and keep you posted. Uh, the Health Advisory Committee is Mrs. Goodwin, uh, is the representative, Mr. Richardson is the alternate. Special Education Advisory Committee, Mrs. Fairman is the representative, Mr. Schaefer is the alternate. Career and Tech Ed Advisory Committee, Mr. Pyavich. Career and Tech Ed Advisory Committee, Mr. Pyavich is representative, Mr. Schaefer is alternate. The Gifted Education Advisory Committee, Mrs. Goodwin is representative, Mr. Richardson is alternate. And the York Foundation for Public Education, Mr. Schaefer is the representative, the alternate is Mrs. Goodwin. Uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All the paperwork that goes through these organizational meetings. Um, that. Alright, this is for the School Board Policy Manual, uh, Policy Review Schedule, and as I understand it, by law, Virginia requires us to review the policy, uh, every five years. And, uh, looking at the schedule, it looks like everything is reviewed in York County every four years, so we have a backup there in case there's any interesting things happening. And, uh, for those watching online, if you take a look, it looks like, uh, every year there's three different policies that are handled, uh, for review. Is there, are there any comments to make on this?
So about, uh, Section L, uh, it's slated to be reviewed this month. I just feel like it's not enough time for us, like, not to dedicate to see it, like, now all through. I would propose it at least for us to move it February or March for those meetings, for the first three meetings.
I'd second that.
Okay, February or March, do you want, March?
Probably March.
March would probably be.
Okay.
Mr. Pyavich, you said L, correct?
Say what?
L.
L.
L, yes.
It's the one that's on the schedule, the date of next board discussion is January twenty twenty-four. Considering we're already partway into January for diving into a policy and review, that may be a little interesting. Is there any issue calendar-wise?
Do you wanna shift everything, the whole calendar, or do you just wanna move L to go with whatever was there for March?
Right now the motion was just L.
Just L.
Yeah, just L.
Are there any further discussions? All those in favor of moving Section L of the policy on the calendar from January to March twenty twenty-four, that covers the Education Agency relations. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Alright, the motion passes now. Um, to, we need a motion to pass the entire schedule for review that covers all four years of the current school board term. Is there a motion? Do we have a motion?
I would like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
Yeah, I'll second.
She did.
Oh, okay.
Sorry, wasn't that enough?
Can't see her down there.
No, I wasn't probably not used to them.
And I used to learn to groups where they're raising hands, you know? We'll get, we'll get caught up here. Alright, so there's a motion on the floor and seconded to approve the School Board Policy Manual, Policy Review Schedule, uh, twenty twenty-four through twenty twenty-seven, with the one change of moving, um, L from January to March. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, passes.
Do these, have you approved this already?
Yes, yep.
Got the committee assignments, those are approved. Um, going back and taking a look at the resolution sheet, um, with all of the different sections on here. Um, I know there was a question that a constituent had of, um, page two, uh, Roman numeral one A, um, the clerk of the school board, the secretary to the superintendent with compensation in accordance with Fair, Fair Labor Standards Act, for completion of the duties of this position and a surety bond set at two hundred fifty thousand dollars. Um, I was asked about this, of why it was so much. I looked it up in code, it's, it says that it ha- it can't be less than ten thousand. And then when I, when I told the constituent that, they were like, why the difference, ten thousand to two hundred fifty thousand? So, I was bringing that up tonight.
It's just, that's what it's always been, I hate to say, but that's, it's always been two hundred fifty thousand. I don't know if Bill has another reason why, or that it's just always been two hundred fifty thousand. We could certainly lower it, if the board would like to.
Certainly, um, those, those types of benchmarks are, um, often set or established, um, by recommendations of our insurance company. So, um, I'm, I'm sure that's probably where that came from, is to have s- a little higher level, um, because the board clerk, uh, does carry out some important duties, and, um, and, and that's probably why, um, but certainly I can do some additional research and bring that back to the board if you would prefer.
Yeah, it was just a curiosity question, because it was such a large amount compared to what it says, we were like, what's that disparity? So, yeah.
Well, just, what's the price difference between ten thousand and two hundred fifty thousand?
Good question. Right.
You know?
Is that, the request, do we want us to look into that right back?
Well, I was gonna ask, could we approve it and then modify it if we wanted to reduce it down to ten thousand? Uh, I mean.
So, I'll, I'll, uh, the, the insurance policy has been approved for twenty twenty-four, twenty-three and twenty-four.
Yeah.
Um, we will bring that back to the board in May for the next fiscal year, so we can address it at that point.
Okay, yeah, that's fine, that's fine.
Okay.
Well, that'd be great, so there's, it's not a, it's not a time crunch thing on this one, perfect.
Not a, no. Right.
That sounds good on that. And of course, uh, let's see, Deputy Clerk of School Board Bunny Gray with compensation applicable to hours' work, have any questions on that? School Board Attorney Melanie V. Berry Esquire, any questions? Um, designation of the superintendent to attend the board's meetings in the absence or inability of the superintendent to attend and assign documents in absence. Hereby is Chief Operations Officer, Officer James Carroll, or another chief officer is specified by the superintendent. Are there any questions or comments on that? Check on some of this. Um, schedule, we already did that, that was approved. Um, down on number three, uh, the bottom of page two, the Division Superintendent Vic Shandor, um, Doctor of Education B, and he hereby is appointed to serve as the board's agent with full authority to examine, to approve, and to pay claims against the board as set out in Virginia Code, Section twenty-two point one dash one twenty-two B, and that the Chief Financial Officer be and hereby is appointed to serve as the board's deputy agent as described herein.
All the legalese, could we get that in real language and make sure the bills are paid, so Dr. Shandor can sign off on some of the bills? And Bill probably has a more financial explanation of it, but it's for paying bills.
Yes, it's for paying bills, and all those bills come through, um, finance, and, um, I, and I approve those bills.
Okay, and it's everything that's already been approved budget-wise and all of that, so we're getting this covered?
Yes.
So the section of the title that's calling for, in absence, for the superintendent to have that, uh, to approve and pay the claims. Uh, but it didn't mention full authority, so like, what does full authority means?
Well, it's, it's in the absence, so it's just like the, what we talked about the fifty thousand, things are coming to you for approval claims, that's the official approval of claims, so it's the things under fifty thousand that he could do himself or Mr. Bowen could do.
Are there any further questions along that line?
Financial managers. Yeah, we get them every month, financial managers, it's listed, and that's the exciting part of our meetings.
And it's basically following the budget, we already know these are coming up, these aren't surprises, okay.
Right. Yep.
Um.
That's our oversight too of the budget, the financial management.
Okay. Um, I'll entertain a motion to approve, um, Roman numeral three that was just read regarding approving and paying claims, uh, that the superintendent, Victor Shandor, serves as the board's agent.
So move seconds.
Okay, Mr. Pyavich moved, Mr. Richardson seconded, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, number four, the Division Superintendent B and hereby is authorized to draw special warrants duly countersigned by the clerk or deputy clerk for compensation earned by administrative license and clerical employees on the last workday of each month and for all other employees on a bi-weekly basis, provided that the December monthly payroll and that month's second bi-weekly payroll be paid on the last school day before the winter holiday period. Are there any questions along those lines?
And I'll flow you.
Hearing no questions, um, is there a motion to approve, uh, Roman numeral four?
I make motion to approve.
Same as Mrs. Goodwin. Moved, Mr. Pyavich seconded, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Number five, um, the Division Superintendent solely be and hereby is, without the prior express approval of the board, authorized to procure goods and services according to statute and applicable county purchasing regulations in amounts not to exceed fifty thousand dollars for a single transaction, provided said procurement has been funded in either the operating budget or the capital improvements budget for fiscal year twenty-four, and to execute change orders to contracts which shall not exceed the greater of fifty thousand dollars or twenty-five percent of the contract price. There were some questions on this one. The first part before the main comma, before, um, everything from fiscal year twenty-four prior, everything was fine with that, um, since it was saying that it was already funded in the, in the budgets. The, the issue that a constituent brought to my attention was to execute change orders to contracts which shall not exceed the greater of fifty thousand dollars or twenty-five percent of the contract price. Since it says greater, twenty-five percent of a contract price, if a contract is four million dollars, twenty-five percent would mean w- he could authorize a change order of a million dollars. That's a huge amount, does that ever happen?
It exceeds over fifty thousand.
Yeah, it's fifty thousand.
I think that's red.
Anything over fifty has to come to us.
Yeah.
No matter if it's.
No, it said, it, which shall not exceed the greater of fifty thousand dollars or twenty-five percent.
Right. Right.
So, do we have any contracts, do we have any contracts that the total would mean that the twenty-five percent is greater than fifty grand?
Fifty thousand dollars.
All construction?
Yeah.
Outside of construction.
Outside of construction. But we would have construction contracts for that.
Yeah.
That was a lot.
The Public Procurement Act is where the twenty-five percent comes from, and that is in the county's ordinance, so either the county administrator or Dr. Shandor can sign off on change orders up to twenty-five percent. Um, we've always followed the Public Procurement Act, um, you could, certainly, we could get more information for you. I think we're already doing that with purchase.
So, when it, when it exceeds, if it exceeds twenty-five percent and then it throws it over that fifty thousand dollars, it's coming to the board.
Right.
Even if it's, uh, even if the initial contract was over fifty thousand dollars, say if it's a construction contract for nineteen million and we have a change order that it's, it's under the twenty-five thousand, we bring it back to the board just as a matter of practice. That's, that's what, that's what we want to do, um, and, and we always do it. The problem again is, um, we, because our construction, this is where it generally happens, um, is at, in the summer, that we're going through lots of change orders, um, lots of change orders, and so, we, we, we take the action, um, and then we bring it back to the board for approval post, um, action by the staff.
Okay.
So, just for clarification, so you're saying up to fifty thousand dollars, like, no, you, you can sign off, right?
Yes.
If it's over, you won't sign it anymore. I think it's like, no, I'm a foreigner, like, no, so reading this, it's just, it's not so clear. I think the intention is like that, it's like, no, up to fifty thousand dollars, but if it's less than, it's like up to twenty-five percent. Am I correct?
Yes.
Okay, so I think we just need to clarify here in the language, like, you know, you know, this, the greater off.
Yeah.
Cause like, and I think when we are just, you know.
It's a little confusing when you.
Yeah, and I, cause I underlined it too, and I was like, wait a minute.
Cause I find the same, like, I think if we take it out and just put like, you know, to be, uh, we shall not exceed fifty thousand dollars or twenty-five percent of this contract price, whichever is less, I think that covers that, kinda like, you know, just clarifies it, because I think we're fine with that, it's like, no, in, with the change order.
It's confusing, I, I, because we're gonna, we're gonna, does that make sense?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
So, are we gonna?
We can reword it?
Yeah, I think we just need to reword it to make it clearer so that we know exactly this.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, you, you could see that we read it and I interpreted it totally differently.
Cause I, I. Medical equation.
Yeah.
On X.
I deal with contracts all the time with this, like, you know, that it has the provision of like, up to a certain amount, like, no, this one just was not, you know, I know the intention is there.
Yeah. Okay, so we'll reword that.
Okay, so, um, motion to table this until the, um, January twenty-ninth meeting, when we get the rewarding of this?
I make motion.
Second.
Mrs. Goodwin moved, Mr. Richardson seconded, any further discussion? All those in favor of tabling, uh, Roman numeral five, uh, until we can see the rewarding and handle this at the January twenty-ninth meeting, everyone say aye.
Aye.
All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Sorry about that.
I'm not a dictator.
Uh, any opposed? Alright, so that one is for the rewarding, thank you very much. We already did the committee assignments, that was six. And we also did the policy review manual, um. Those, Division Superintendent B and hereby is authorized to make changes to the School Board Policy Manual Review Schedule. On that one. So we've just approved the schedule, but you can, yeah, but you can change it?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, we're gonna move out.
Okay, yeah, we already moved to.
Yeah, and because we do, because we're, we do a four-year versus a five-year, we will come to the board and say, hey, something's getting ready to come down from the, the Virginia Department of Education, or Ms. Berry will give us information, so we'll bring that to you and say,
Okay.
we may wanna hold on G, for example, in, so we'll, we'll bring those to you.
So like new laws coming down and new, new directives to the Virginia School Board Association?
Correct. In timing.
Not Virginia School Board Association, the Virginia School Board.
Right.
Uh, along those lines.
Okay.
Um, with that clarification, do, um, I have a motion, that's page three, very last page, yeah, right there. Do I hear a motion to approve, uh, Roman numeral eight on page three of the resolution?
I move that we've approved number eight.
Mr. Schaefer, uh, moved, Mr. Pyavich seconded, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So that handles the resolution, and we will come back to those items that were tabled for more information.
Ms. Fairman, I have a question. Did the board vote on number one and two, cause I only have number three that you started with?
We did not, we didn't go back to.
You approved it, you didn't vote.
We didn't go back to that.
The schedule.
The schedule of regular board meetings, yes, that was approved.
Yeah, approved that.
It was one.
And number one, the following appointments be made, we were, um, uh, B, C, and D were there, and of course, uh, E is the, the election that you just held.
Right.
Um, so, we were just finding out on the clerk of the school board, yeah, the question regarding the surety bond.
So, we're gonna bring then number one back on the twenty-ninth?
Yes.
Yeah, we'll bring it back on the twenty-ninth.
Thank you so much on that. Now, moving along to number three of the agenda, I'm sorry, I'm not following your script. Following the agenda here. Let's see, the agenda under, uh, discussion. A, discussion of structure of meetings was brought before the board.
Yes, uh, I'll start that one off. Um, as, as a new board, something I'd like to see as part of our structure in our board meetings is I'd like to, uh, invite a local clergy to open our board up with prayer, prayer before the board. It is purely optional, this does not make anybody have to engage in it, but it is there for those board members, if you so choose to, uh, bow your head for prayer, and I think it would just be a good.
I'm for it a hundred percent, but I think that we need to get some guidance from our legal, just on.
And just so you know, I'm sure, I welcome your input, I did seek legal advice before bringing this up, cause I know that when you introduce anything with religion, prayer, whatever, it's always, you know, a delicate issue, so.
Yeah.
And there is, um, guidance, uh, on the styling of the prayer.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and, uh, just as a FYI, it includes any recognized religion by the United States. So, we, I know the board supervisors has a list of clergy, and they invite any clergy who wants to be on the list, and they just go through the list one by one.
Right.
Uh, but it would include, include any recognized religions, so.
It didn't.
You would have to invite all of you, couldn't invite ju- you couldn't pick and choose, you'd have to open it up to any recognized religions.
And isn't that Chesapeake that's going through now with the, uh, Satanist?
I'm not sure if that's a recognized religion.
If you can call it quite a religion.
Wiccan is a recognized, recognized religion, but I'm not sure the same club itself is a recognized religion.
I have no problem with that. Um, I would second a motion if you want to bring it up.
Can I make, make a motion?
Okay, um, Mrs. Goodwin is moving to add, uh, prayer to begin the school board meetings. Is it just for the, overall, the, uh, the regular meetings or the work sessions also in addition? Is it just for the, overall the, uh, the regular meetings or the work sessions also in addition?
I was looking at the, uh, regular.
The regular meeting.
The regular meeting.
And I would second that.
All right, seconded by Mr. Richardson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And we'll get a list of who wants to participate with that, and I would say probably we can, um, have a chat with the board supervisors and find out, uh, who they're.
Maybe get the same list.
Yeah.
Anything else on structure of meetings? Uh, not from me personally. Mr. Pyavich, did you want anything on structure of meetings?
Uh, as far as like, I would like to talk just the structure, uh, how we have, uh, students coming in, recognizing. Uh, I, I feel like, uh, as a new board member, like, well, this is the more working session. And I, I feel like, you know, that there is a place for the students to be recognized more among their peers rather than just in front of us as a board. Uh, so I don't know, like, you know, is that something that, like, everybody else feels like it, that, like, you know, when students come in, you know, it's taking them away from the studying, you know, for the evening sessions, uh, would be better off, like, you know, having them presenting awards and recognizing in front of their school, um, their friends.
I would just weigh in that, um, I know there's a lot of recognition that is done at the school level. Um, these are the, the best of the best, these are the seniors of the month, uh, the kids that do a little extra above and beyond, and I think it's a big deal, it's a big recognition, and we're here for the kids, we're here for them. And I think it's a big recognition, and we have a, a strong military family area here. Uh, sometimes the, the, um, parent may be deployed, they can watch it on YouTube, they can see their child getting a award. Family members are distant, that are, aren't in the area, uh, can watch them get an award. Um, I think it's one of the best things we do, actually, that, and the, the accent on academics also.
Yeah.
Shows us what's going on in the schools. Um, and it's a positive thing, and it takes about thirty minutes to start up our meeting. Um, I'm willing to start the meeting a half hour early if we need to, to continue that. I just think it's something important, because we recognize those, those, um, those students, I think, that, uh, really go above and beyond. And we also recognize our volunteers that, um, do a lot for our schools, and that's certainly important as well. Um, you know, it's, it's a small token for the amount of work that they do. And even with the students, it's a small token for the amount of work and effort they put in to attain that level, as, as, uh, senior of the month, but that's, that's where I stand, that's my opinion. Um, I, I see what you mean, it could be done at the school level, it could. But, um, I, I just think so many of our awards aren't done at the school level, this is a, this is a big deal.
I, I mean, I, I agree with, like, you know, recognizing, uh, what I've seen is, like, you know, it's just a small group, like, you know, yes, they're recognized by us, but by board. But like, you know, what it means actually is, like, you know, them in school, in front of their friends, peers.
Well, I think back to when I was in high school, um, yeah, that being recognized in front of my peers was a big deal. Like, that was the, the all honor, like, if I got an award and it was in front of my peers, you know, that meant a lot. Um, and I'm not saying we definitely need to recognize for sure, I mean, that is very important. And this is by no means saying that it's not important, it's just the question of would it be better served to have it at the school level where it's recognized in front of all the peers? And it is a big honor, I don't, you know, this is the best of the best.
I'm not so sure they aren't recognized at the school level.
Yeah, they, well, they are, because I'm thinking of Bruton's Hall of Fame, is you walk out of the office and turn left, and you have all the pictures of the seniors of the month, uh, there.
But are they, are they recognized in an assembly, you know, issue, you know, where they're really highlighted in front of their peers as opposed to, oh, someone's picture got put up in the hallway?
Well, no, well, they get recognized, they'll be recognized, uh, in their, um, in their award ceremony at the end of the year, yeah. Uh, uh, when they award all the scholarships and all that good stuff. Uh, they get recognized then. But as far as our meetings go, it's totally, it's totally setting them apart. Uh, and I know that, uh, I, because I've had a few families that have, uh, had multiple children in it, which is pretty awesome when you think about it. And I think that, uh, that it's really a, um, uh, a big thing for the kids, because we go and put signs in their yard. And so, the whole neighborhood knows it and everything. And, uh, and when we, we recognize them, they have their whole family there. Uh, a lot of times, I mean, we've had, uh, uh, numerous relatives come, uh, and it's, it is a big thing. And then the pictures afterwards when we're up there, uh, I'm, they love it, they really do. And I think that, um, like Jimmy said, especially with the military presence with as many of these, uh, since we have, have the most retired and most active duty, uh, military of any county in Virginia, that it's, uh, it would be a big thing to see your kid on YouTube at the school board meeting, being recognized like that. And I think that, that's a little bit more than, than, uh, than at school, because I wouldn't see it at school.
Well, we could send out, we have PR department. We could send, you know, the PR department to take the videos at the schools.
The county does that now, yeah. I don't know if they'd be able to, cause they kinda cut us out of that, but we have to ask the county, I don't know.
We don't, well, I mean, who takes, you know, because.
Pictures, we could do pictures.
So, when, when did this policy came, like, you know, for them, like, to come in, how long was ago and?
It, it was long before I, I got here. When I got here, we already had accent on academics, volunteer of the month, seniors of the month. Um, trying to think of a few of the other.
We recognize some employees from time to time.
Right, right, employees, awards, you know, um, Phil's finance team receives awards. Um, Ms. Goff's communications team receives awards. It's, um, National Blue Ribbon that we've had, Purple Star Schools. So, it's been, it's been in effect for more than, more than ten years. May, maybe Ms. Skinner could add, she's been here quite a long time.
Quite a long, quite a long. Um, as, as far back as I can recall, it's been in place.
Yeah.
Um, I was just trying to look here to see if there's anything in policy. I did not see anything in policy regarding this, but I could be wrong on the board.
Well, there's the agenda format, this policy, we'd have to revise that, so that would have to come to you as a policy change for a discussion versus separating.
Good discussion.
Okay. So, um, with the discussion, do you, um, do you want to table this until we take a look at the policy?
I would, I would, like, you know, it's like, we absolutely need to wanna recognize everybody, you know, for their achievements. Uh, it's just like, you know, what I'm, I think, it's like, you know, is it the right place just for the board? Like, I would like to personally go and congratulate every one of them. You know, and I wouldn't mind going in front of their friends and giving them a word, you know, rather than like, you know, cause like, you know, they come into it with families, like, you know, there's only just few people, it's like, you know, and they stand up for two seconds, then that's it. But like, in front of their peers, it's like, it's a bigger group, and it's like, we give them that honor, like, you know, that we came for them, not them in front of us. Uh, so, that's, that's my thing, and I, you know, for the interest of, you know, the agenda, like, you know, what we have going on, a lot of people, it's like, you know, they pack up and they leave, and afterwards, it just feels like it's vacuum uh, of like, you know, public stuff that we have to discuss, that, you know, a lot of people need to hear. But that's why it's just kinda like, you know, it's like I got involved, it's like, you know, listening to me, seeing, being present, like, you know, as an option. So, I'm okay with that, like, you know, tabling, like, reviewing policy, and then we can back to discussing it later on, so.
I'm okay with tabling as well.
Can I ask you just a quick question? So, um, as far as when tabling, when tabling is, is concerned, I, I would ask the board consider to at least just finish the school year with senior of the month, cause we've already done half this year.
Absolutely.
So, I would say maybe that could be something that the board could, could review in June or July. This way, then starting the school year, we can start off with either keeping it the same or going.
Absolutely.
This way, we're sort of already, you know, schools are already accustomed to writing their summaries and all that stuff, so.
If anything is the change, I would not, you know, I'd not like to affect anybody like right now, so.
Okay.
So, is that accent on academics as well, I know we're working with Crestford Airport University right now for our upcoming one, so I would just need to let them know.
What, what is the accent on academics, is that where you have classroom come in and demonstrate what they're doing?
That's where the kids come in and present their thing, like, the last one was, uh, was gardens and the bees and all that, that was so interesting.
Had a question on that, just knowing from being a teacher, the, the teachers are putting an incredible amount of work during the day, you know, when they're with their students, and then they're not only working on what the students need to succeed in their academics, they're now having to put together a script and basically a drama presentation of their classroom activity, and then come after hours to present it, and then they're getting up the next morning and having to do all of that. That's a lot to ask of our, of our teachers, who are already putting in incredible amounts of time in planning and putting everything together and making sure the kids are succeeding. Is there any way that we could see about, rather than having them create this drama presentation of it, of sending PR, you know, whether it's from either the county, and we can ask the board supervisors, you know, to share their equipment, or however that works, of sending them to the actual school with the classroom, however the process is of, I'm assuming that principals nominate teachers who are doing outstanding things in their classroom, for whichever one is selected for that month, we actually go and, you know, video them doing it in the classroom with their peers, and then announce it at a school board meeting, and maybe at the beginning of the school board meeting, before we start, you'd have it up on the screen that's, that's behind us, and then it would be on the website, and then we would highlight it in speaking that night, but that way the teachers wouldn't have to be putting together this extra work on top of what they're already doing in the classroom. That's just from a teacher standpoint.
And I think some teachers might have a standpoint of they wanna show off, they wanna come in and showcase. And part of really what we try and do is have our kids do the presentation. So, we had one from McGruder early in the year, we had kindergartners come up and present. So, I mean, I, I, I completely hear what you're saying.
You can still see that it's coordinated, yeah.
It, it, I absolutely, a hundred percent it's coordinated.
And that takes a lot of time and effort.
I mean, and again, that, that's.
And they do a great job.
That's, that's y'all's decision on how you wanna, um, you know, I think that some teachers and families and kids feel it's an honor to come and present to the board. Um, and it's really, it's personal, um, versus maybe what a video or something else makes. But again, once again, that, that's y'all's decision.
I mean, I'm sure we can do videos, we have little video cameras, but the professional stuff is what the county has.
Right.
Really nice stuff that they can edit, so. When I brought up videos in the county, I would meet them, we can't do videos, I'm sure they can't do videos. But, um, the, the professional grade that they have, like they're doing tonight, um, is through the county.
Through video services.
Yeah, through video services, yeah.
Well, uh, to piggyback on, uh, Vic's point about, uh, McGruder's story. It was, it was kindergartners in Sandy Morosky's class, had been a teacher for forty-four years, uh, and she just retired. But I went into her classroom after that, after their presentation, cause they, they did the best one all, all year. I mean, these little kindergartners got up there and were awesome. And, uh, I went into her classroom after it, and the kids could not stop talking about when they came and did that, cause they just thought it was the neatest thing. And they could do that at, at five and six years old.
Okay, well, um, I'm here to, we had, let's see. Mrs. Ford, did we have a motion on the floor concerning this, or it was just open discussion?
Discussion.
Yes, it's open discussion.
It was just open discussion. Um, do I hear that you want to table to continue things as they are until we take a look at policy?
I make motion.
And handle that.
Motion to table until we can review policy and get more information.
Okay, Mrs. Goodwin moves to table this possible change. Um, Mr. Pyavich seconds. Uh, is there any further discussion on this? Um, we'll be looking at policy to see what comes up with that. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right. Um, is there anything additional on structure of meetings? Um, one of the things that has been brought to attention that really only elected officials should be on the dais, at the, the main board meeting up there, that the superintendent, the attorney, it's not anything personal, it's just up there, it's the elected officials. Because we answer to the constituents, um, we're, we have to follow the law, but we also answer to the constituents. And then the superintendent and staff are basically answering to the board. So, um, I know there was that particular, um, concern along those lines.
That was, that was a real concern of someone, really.
Well, you know, it was brought to our, my attention, especially when I was at, um, trainings over the last two years, the different trainings that I've been going to, and it was actually brought up that it, by several people, that it should be school board members on the dais, and that, that's the structure of how that should go. I'm going off of what I'm hearing from, um, training that I have gone to, and also as well as talking with some, uh, different school board members that are friends of mine on school boards throughout Virginia, um, so.
I mean, I just came along in county government, uh, working for the county, and I've seen even our county administrators sit up there with board supervisors at every meeting. I never thought anything of it, it's, he's just there to answer questions, he's easily accessible and that sort of thing, which should be easily accessible if he's ten more feet away, but I don't, I don't, I don't see the big deal. But if it's a big deal, then it should be it.
So, it was just like I said, in trainings that I had attended, that was something that had been mentioned.
And what's the purpose that makes it?
I think to trying to get the approach that, that the constituents, or they elect the board, so the constituency, or the board is answerable to the constituents, and the superintendent is answerable to the board, and I think it's just.
So, by separating them, that?
It's just communicating what that, yeah.
I got you, I understand what you're saying.
Perception.
Yeah.
I'll entertain a motion to.
In my, well, I mean, we're still discussing, right?
Yes, yes.
Okay. I mean, in my perception, if, uh, it's not broken, why fix it? I mean, it's worked fine, there's been a number of times when I've had to ask questions of both Melanie and Vic up there.
Well, we can still ask questions, yeah. I mean, that doesn't change, there's microphones.
Yeah, I'm a little, I'll have to look over, that's all. Still looking left or right.
They can have mics?
Of course. Yeah, well, they, everybody who's in. Well, would have to.
Um, I don't know if you have mics there or not, you get to come up to the podium.
Oh, there way, that's, don't microphone.
Yeah.
You know, so, that's, that's not a problem for asking questions or anything.
But I, I also don't like to come off as a perception of, uh, we're high and mighty and these are little people too. Cause that's not the way it is.
I know, it's not a.
That's the perception there, yeah, that's absolutely a perception.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, it's, it's not along those lines, it's more that we're the ones elected by the constituents, we answer to the constituents.
Right, and that doesn't change, no matter where you're at.
Yeah.
Okay, I see people with food line.
But it's, it's kind of like a, a, I guess, you know, the old fashioned with military chain of command, that you have your, um, the voters are voting for the, uh, the school board, and the school board hires and fires the superintendent and everyone, you know, along the line, uh, with staff. So, it's following that basic chain of command, viewpoint.
And since this is on for discussion, I don't think you can really vote on it, but I'm not sure you really need to vote on it. It's kind of, we, the design of the room is kind of the pleasure of the board. So, if the board wants to change it around, I mean, back when I first started, I didn't even go to board meetings. Dr. Staples didn't see the need to have an attorney there. So, I wasn't even at the board meeting, so, and then Dr. Williams came on and he wanted me there and everything, so it changed, so. And then I started sitting up there, so. I don't, it's not appropriate to vote on it, because it's only for discussion, but I don't think it really has to be voted on.
Okay, so in that instance, it would then fall under preliminary procedure of the, basically what the chair is setting up for the meeting? Okay. Then we'll, we'll follow through with that. Um, let's see. Have that, the, um, one of the things that was concerning to us at the beginnings of here, that our meetings are open meetings, so it's full transparency to the people. That having the pre-meeting, even though it was sectioned as two, two of us, and then two of us, and then one of us to separate out, so it was, you know, handling the open meeting law. Um, the problem is, is that I wasn't hearing the questions from the other two who were meeting at this time, and I'm, or the other questions and comments from the other two at that time. That where it's open meeting here, everybody's hearing our discussion, as well as it's helping us as board members hear the discussion, it's also helping, um, our constituents, the taxpayers, the parents, students watching, that they're hearing everything as opposed to, well, we've already asked all of our questions and they've been answered, you know, at prior meetings.
Well, that was never the intent. The intent of a two-on-two meeting has been to provide the board with information related to any topics, and as I, as I've shared with each of you, we don't have two-on-twos for every work session. This was a transition between an election, so trying to make sure that the outgoing board members had the information that they needed during their transition, and trying to have you all with the information that you needed, and not explaining it to each of you, um, several times, it's a cha, it's just a challenge, it's a, it's a challenge. It's a cha, it's just as a challenge, it's a, it's a challenge with information. It's also a challenge for talking to the attorney about what day can I give them this information? When can you get their badges? When can you get their pins? What, so that was a challenge. Those two-on-two meetings are not every month, they're not every, we'll do them for some big topics. The budget is always a big topic that we do two-on-twos on. And, and I would advise that we continue that practice. My understanding is that it's not illegal, correct?
It, it is under FOIA, it's allowable.
Right.
As long as you don't have three or more board members.
Correct.
Right. And in most cases, it's my understanding that the questions that were asked in the two-on-twos were then brought also back during the board meetings.
Right, brought a lot of questions back.
People who asked them.
Same, yeah, typically when, when those, when we have the two-on-twos for clarity and, and understanding, the board members will ask those questions publicly anyway.
Because if we have the questions and people watching.
Correct.
From what we're asking.
Right, right. Because some of this stuff can be complicated at times as we're looking through it. So, so the budget is one we've done two-on-twos, the CIP is always one we've done two-on-twos, because that's a big number, big topic for communities. Obviously rezoning is coming up. I think the example I used with, with you all, with two-on-twos, like when we have a, a bigger, um, stakeholder committee, stakeholder group working on recess, for example. So we would want to bring you information so that you could understand what the team is working on, so we're bringing along because there are a number of constituents. So if the board's pleasure is not to have two-on-two meetings, then that's, that's fine, but I'll still offer them to board members who would like to participate. Because I think it's important that board members have some information. It doesn't mean that anyone's doing anything secretly or it's basically the information that we're sharing. So we shared that information on Wednesday with you all, the agendas were already posted and the presentations were posted. So there was no secretive, um, I've been here for ten years, we've never done it that way. Um, and I do know that the county with Mr. Morgan, I know that he meets with, or met with Mr. Zerumba and Mr. Green and, and Ms. Old, Mr. Shepherd and Mr. Roan in the same two-on-two format for the last nine years.
We could do one-on-one, but it saves time to do two-on-two.
No, no, and I think it's a good practice.
Yeah, I'll be honest with you, I'll do it any way you want it.
I think it's a good practice, I'm just trying to be mindful of not even so much my time, because it's, I'm new, so I, that's actually information. I'm trying to be mindful of other six hours of y'all's time, because, you know.
Oh, we're aware of the.
We're aware, yes, we know.
You present the same thing four times.
Yeah, and I feel.
Yes, so tonight he should do a great job on his presentation.
So, yeah, I'm looking at it from a perspective of, I don't want these people to have to do multiple, you know, they've got a lot of work to do.
Yes, correct, and we, and we won't.
Yeah, but I found it useful for me.
Thank you, Ms. Goodwin, I appreciate you sharing that.
So, I did like.
Again, during that transition, it is tough, and this is my third election. So as we've had board members transition on and off, we're trying to, part of what staff's saying is we're giving y'all too much information. Because it's, it's operations, it's finance, it's instruct, so there's a lot of information in policy and everything else. So then we try to think, well, let's try to do it in bite-sized pieces, that may help a little bit better. And there's just a lot to learn. We will not burden the board with two-on-twos for every work session, we, we will not do that. However, for the next one, for the budget, we may have such conversations. But, but it's not a continuing practice. Typically, I, I'll call you individually and say, have you pulled the agenda, have you looked at it? Are there any concerns or questions that you might have that we missed or any additional questions, and then you can share that with me. That's typi, that's a typical practice. But what we did last Friday was, yes, I would, I would agree, was exhausting. You know, you guys were tired and, and staff wasn't.
I felt more, I, I was fine, I felt more bad for those of you that had to do like all day, you know.
Unfortunately, for Ms. Goodwin, she was, she and Mr. Schaefer relaxed, so you got to see us from three to four-thirty on the.
They were so bad.
We were fresh at eleven o'clock.
You had to meet.
Hey, we, we got them out by five, that was.
We didn't, we didn't. Okay, that sounds good.
Thank you, appreciate you guys leaving it.
Is, is there, uh, any other discussion under structure of meetings? All right, we'll move on, discussion of board member decorum.
So I, I put that on there as a request, just to say, um, I'm glad to be part of this board. Um, now that we are a board together, I hope that we would, uh, support edify one another out in, in the community. Um, I put this on there because it was brought to my attention, um, you never know who you're talking to when you're talking to people at, you know, restaurants, conferences, things like that. And, uh, um, it was just brought to my attention that there were some things that were said that were not so nice. And it's okay, because we all have different feelings about things and, and I'm okay with that. Going forward, I would just like to make sure that we all, um, edify one another, even when we don't agree, you know, we're not going to agree on different things. But we should support one another and, uh, you know, just keep a positive, uh, positive verbiage for one another while we're talking to others, that's all.
I think you're gonna find that, uh, that we agree a lot more than you think. Because we don't generally have too many differences of, of opinions. I mean, it might be that, that, uh, that I feel one way and, and Jimmy might feel another. But then once we talk, then we're, we're good. I mean, for the past four years, we've, uh, the board has been of one mind and I don't expect that to change. Because we put the, uh, the children, the staff and the families first.
Right.
Of York County. I mean, and that's, that's what it is. I mean, and there's, I mean, we're not gonna be petty.
Well, I did, like I said, I just put it out there, you know, because it's human nature sometimes.
Well, just like, just like I called you after the meeting. And I said, that was a great meeting, thank you. You know, I've never done that after two by, uh, two by two before, I'll tell you.
Well, that's good. I'm, I think dissent, you know, dissent is good and it's okay to have that. And, you know, to have it and still be able to be amicable is, is a good thing.
Let's go, anything else on board member decorum?
Can I ask one question?
Sure.
Yes.
Um, I think that, um, it, board member decorum is incredibly important. Equally as, as professional decorum from staff members. I think both of those have to work simultaneously. Um, I think the board table, you guys had an incredible challenge daily, as, as do we as staff. I feel like for the last nine or ten years, I've had multiple board members, from, you know, Ms. Haywood, Mr. Schaefer, not Mr. Schaefer, I'm sorry, Mr. Medford. And just, I, I, it's three elections and multiple folks. I think the biggest thing I respect from the process of working with the board is the backgrounds. So you have a different background than Kim, Kim has a different background than Zorin. Zorin's background is different from Jimmy, Jimmy's different from Mark. Those perspectives are incredibly, incredibly valuable. Just like the folks that, that are on the team in the room, everyone has different backgrounds, they've worked at different school settings, larger schools, smaller schools, suburban, urban. That's why I think our team functions, so when I say our team, I mean our board and our stat, and senior staff. Because we have to be respectful of each other. And we can have conversations behind closed doors, and we will, we, we will disagree, there are going to be things that happen sometimes in our schools that are incredibly challenging, as you know. And I'll have to call you and tell you certain things. But at the end of the day, I think knowing that, and I think Zorin said it best at the first budget meeting about his intentions of why he was going for the board, we're, we're gonna do our best for kids. And I think that that professional decorum and mutual respect is incredibly important. When I first got here, we, we, um, at the, the work session table, I had to counsel a few seasoned cabinet members and new board members. Because they weren't letting each other speak. And they were letting each other speak, but they were trying to answer the question before the question was asked. And that came off as, you know, Zorin was really mad at Dave and Dave's mad at Zorin. But really, Dave was just trying to tell Zorin the answer, but Zorin hadn't answered the question yet. It appears people are cutting people off, if that makes sense. So I just think we have an incredible opportunity to be an example for our students. We have an incredible example to share how people can disagree in professional, and professional, professional respectful manner, so I think that makes sense. Absolutely, thank y'all for letting me say that.
Absolutely. Anything else? All right, moving on to C, discussion of communication protocol and process with school board members. And this was actually one that I put, um, on the agenda. Um, mainly because it came out, and this is over quite a few months, as well as into years. That unfortunately, it has come to my attention that some members of faculty and staff have been told they cannot talk to any school board member. Or they will be reprimanded, or they will be fired. Heard that from a faculty member who said the principal said that to him. Um, and it's not just one particular school, it's not just one particular area, it's not one particular teacher or staff member. While I understand chain of command, you know, once again, military, you know, everybody understands that. Uh, as a school board member, we're connected with the constituency probably more so than faculty and everybody are because of, after door knocking thousands of doors over several months and meeting everybody. People want to tell you things and, yes, we have to handle the idea that one person's vision of what happened versus what another person saw what happened can be two different things. You do have to weigh it, however, no faculty or staff members should feel intimidated or pressured or threatened to not talk with us at all or answer any of our questions. And, um, that's, that's a main issue. And then it, it actually goes into, um, we have in the policy manual, section G, Personnel Board Staff Communications. It, um, it goes, the provision's intent is that the board will deal only with the division superintendent in respect to all manners, matters for which he is responsible. And we understand that because you're handling a lot of different things. Employees are encouraged to communicate their ideas and concerns in an orderly and constructive manner to the school board and/or the superintendent or superintendents designate. So that actually says it in here, and this is following Virginia law. And it ends with, this policy should not be interpreted as prohibiting teachers or staff from speaking directly with school board members. It is recognized that informal lines of communication do exist. The intent of the policy is to direct concerns to parties responsible for addressing the issues as soon as possible. And we understand that. But also with chain of command and handling things, if I need information from a faculty member who I've worked with in the past and I pick up the phone and say, hey, can you give me this information? And I'm told, well, you actually have to go through the PR department, who then gets the okay from the superintendent to then call the principal. The principal will then find the information from me, who will then backtrack it along the line, whereas all it would have taken would be answering my question.
Would be easier just to call the superintendent and ask the question.
In, in five, in five minutes. But see, then the superintendent would have to go through, you know, I have to go through and ask everything.
For what's going on.
Yeah, the way we, the way we've handled this in the past, and I'll address two things. One is, any informational requests, any report that's needed from the board should come to, to the superintendent. Is that in policy, Ms. Barry?
That is in policy, um.
Because what, what, what we've had, and there's, the reason for that would be, sometimes multiple folks will call multiple people and then multiple people are working on the same problem.
Correct.
And that's just not at the school, that's in our departments. We have, we've developed and used let's talk, because in the past, and he's sitting right here, Aaron Butler, Dr. Butler handles a lot of student matters in our school system and supports our principals. But if a principal or a, or if a parent would call Dr. Butler, they'd call Ms. Parr, they would call Dave Reichs, they would call Christine Hitt. So they're calling seven or eight different people, we couldn't coordinate a response because they were calling so many different people. That's why if we just start at one point of entry, then we can get the information. And the information that I think that, um, Ms. Barry was referring to, we had a elected official ask, we're state champions. And Trevor, who works in our delegate elect's office, sent an email to, I think it was either Ms. Goff or myself.
He called me.
I, and maybe he's called you as well, and I think maybe he's sent that to each of the board members. Soon as we got it, within two days, Dr. Hartley, who I think is in here somewhere, Dr. Hartley responded, responded to Trevor in two days. So I, but I think what happened was, we sent so much of, Dr. Hartley did a thorough job, but he sent probably way too much. And then I think it was a time and date, it was a calendar year request versus not a calendar.
It was a school year.
Or whatever it was. So, so, and I, and I know Trevor, Trevor now knows Catherine, uh, Ms. Goff as well, we, we've met, we've talked, so I basically told Trevor, Trevor, he just calls. We will get you the information you need. Because ADs and coaches and teachers during the school day, they're, they're in front of kids where Dr. Hartley, who's over athletics, can, can find the time to pull those reports. So, so the first thing I'll say is, please just ask what, what you need. Um, I think at some point during my tenure on the board, we had multiple requests coming from multiple board members. And I think we did have to sit down and say, okay, what do you want us to work on? For example, I think tonight was a good example with the twenty-three, twenty-four report for the memberships and the contracts.
Yeah.
Like, that's why when, when we're asking those questions, we need to know exactly what you need because of the time element, what it's gonna take.
Right.
So, um, I think as we move forward, with any requests, just, just tell us what you need and we'll, we'll get you the information. It really just depends on how, how much staff time it's gonna take, when do you need to buy, just those types of things. So we're certainly never going to prohibit a board member from any information. Now, the, the second thing I want to talk about is, is, is staff members. We, we do have some staff members who at times may say things they shouldn't say or do. Um, as you know, from the past however many years in, in public education. Uh, what I will say is, you know, ninety-eight to ninety-nine percent of them come to work every day to work as hard as they can for kids. Uh, unfortunately, sometimes we have, we may have a staff member say the wrong thing or do the wrong thing, doesn't make them a bad person. What I want to try to work on is the relationships between board members and our staff members. That's why we had our principals come here tonight, to start that relationship with, with our three new board members in the community. I don't want to have the impression that no one's allowed to talk to anybody, they can talk to whoever they want. The whole community talks to me when I'm at Wal, I shop at Walmart. Walmart, Target, the Y, I'm at the YMCA six days a week and no one has a problem coming up and asking me about canceling school or the weather or any topic. Their child's grades, their discipline. So this is, you all were experienced this one, I know as not, because I've heard all of you, uh, Zorin, talk about knocking on doors, because you're gonna hear those situations. What I would offer is, give us an opportunity to respond, give us an opportunity to give you that information. Uh, we want, I want to build trust with all players, whether it's the board or our staff members. I, I have never told a principal to direct a staff member not to talk to a board member. That, that's ridiculous. What I, what I have said in the past is, to Mr. Richardson, potentially may have received a call in the past about transportation.
Potentially.
Potentially. And I'll tell Mr. Richardson, Mr. Richardson, please talk to that employee so they can go to the person who can solve their problem. And then have them get back to you if they can't work through that issue, then we'll escalate it to the next person. And then I think Mr. Riddick was here somewhere, he's here, our transportation. So we want to have the people closest to the issue solve the problem. There is no, don't talk to them. And, and we've, and, and Ms. Barry had already talked about that, I don't want to help that person on camera. But we, we're certainly not gonna operate, I don't want to operate in that space. Nobody, nobody wants to operate, nobody wants to walk on eggshells. I think everybody wants to come to work and do a good job, so. That's kind of where I hope we can start and develop and move forward, in regarding to, to those protocols. We also talked about, if you don't mind if I talk about protocols for a second.
Sure.
So we have a double call protocol for executive staff and board members. If Ms. Goodwin calls my, my phone twice within minutes, wherever I am, I'll, I'll answer it. And vice versa, so if we call each other twice, our administrators all know double call protocol. It's a great way to get people, because things happen in our schools, as you've seen by some of the emails I forwarded you, whether it's a staff injury or, you know, a student situation. Those are dou, double call protocol. Every Friday, I'll send you Friday notes, um, that you received. It was sort of a, um, Ms. Ford actually said, Dr. Shandor, are you sure you don't want to wait till next Friday? Because it was only like a three-day week and I spent half a day with, with y'all. So there's not as much on there as typically is. Um, so Friday notes, double call protocol, we do the two-on-twos again sparingly, but the, the phone calls will happen. But I think one of the most important things for board member communication and staff is school business. I think the more you can come to the schools and get in the schools and see the work of our teachers, meet our custodians, meet our sedexo cafeteria people, there's some great people who work here. And I think the more that you get into those schools, I think you'll feel that pride and, as we move forward. But those are the four or five ways that we try to communicate with y'all. Um, and typically, there's one day a week that, that I typically call sacred time. My team, we have cabinet on Thursday mornings, correct? What time is cabinet? To when?
To when we're done.
To when we're done. So typically, that was a great answer. So typically, they'll hope that you call, so. So I would say, we would like that to be protected time, because we're working on larger topics that involve the whole school division. That's really only sacred time. But other than that, is there any other questions around any sort of protocol or communications?
I was, I was just gonna share that, uh, anytime I go in the.
I was, I was just gonna share that anytime I go in the schools in, in the Bruton Zone, teachers, cafeteria worker, anybody, they aren't afraid at all. They come right up to me and tell me everything. I've been around those schools for, what, thirty years now? So it's like, yeah, I know most of the teachers and I know the administrators and they have no problems at all sharing.
Oh, no, they'll share.
Yeah.
That's a good thing. I think that's important that they share. They should have a voice.
Yeah, it is. The second one was, I'll share with you, one of the things that he was talking about, I just had a question one time. And I know Candy knew the answer. So I call Candy and she wasn't there, her secretary answered, okay? And I just said, would you ask Candy to give me a call whenever she gets a chance? I, I just have a question, you know? It was about remediation that we were doing coming out of COVID. And, and so all that threw the whole world into a tizzy. Board members called, oh my gosh. No, it wasn't, it was a small question. That's when Dave ended up calling me back and giving me the information, but then I talked to Vic and Vic goes, Mark, do me a favor.
Just please call me.
Give me a call first and, and I'll find out. I said, I, I mean, it was such a small question, I didn't wanna, you know, disturb everyone. And it's turned out, I sent the whole school board off and said, do a tizzy.
He did. He absolutely did.
Absolutely did.
So, and again, the, the folks in this room and the folks that work in the school division are servant people. They want to help and give people information. So if, if one of you call, yes, there's an added pressure, and I've told Mark this and I've told all of you, you are no longer Ken Goodwin. You are no longer Zorn, you are no longer Jimmy, you're no longer Mark, you're no longer Linda. You are a board member. There's a difference. And Mark says, no, that's not true. We argue about this all the time.
These are people I've been around for decades, you know?
It's different now.
But now it's different.
It is different.
I've taught with these people.
Yes, 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 yes. So, but if there's ways that you feel we can communicate some of those processes or procedures, I'm just wide open for the feedback numbers if those don't work. Because we also talked about schedules. Because some of you might be retired, some of you work, some of you have, and they work on two or three days a week that are heavier than others. So we know of good, you know, better times to contact you during the school day should this situation arise.
Okay. I would say if you can just, you know, put out to the faculty and staff that it's okay to talk to us. And if we have a question and if, if they say, we really need to check with someone, it's like, okay, sure, that's fine. But, yeah.
They can certainly ask you whatever, they could ask all of you whatever questions they have, one hundred percent. Go ahead, Mel.
And I, I will say that if there's a legal question, feel free to email me directly. Not as a group, just one person. And sometimes if I have the answer, I will give it back to everyone and I'll say, please respond individually to remind you, don't reply all because you're creating a meeting.
Okay.
And that way, if one board member has a question, you probably all have the same question, so that's why I'll respond to you all, just to make sure everyone gets the same answer.
Okay, thank you very much. That's very helpful. All right, the next on the agenda is discussion of communication, sorry, discussion of Virginia School Boards Association Code of Conduct for school board members.
So Madam Chair, I think we can actually loop these, both of these next two together, the norms and protocols, because I believe that's something we can work on at a retreat, especially the norms and protocols, because that's something we would all agree on. We just take them in a generalized norms and protocol list from wherever we have, what we currently have or from the beginning, and we'd say, is this what we want? We all agree to it, okay, we'll keep that one. Is this what we want? Nope, we don't want it, we kick it out. And we can also discuss the, I think the, the V S B A Code of Conduct. The reason I say wait to discuss that because I understand you're going to another training with another group. They may have a Code of Conduct.
Right, and I think that that's a good point.
It may be similar, it may be different, but it would be good to sit there and compare them side by side and say, okay, which one's better?
Sure.
And I'm, I'm good with that.
Right. Do you wanna put that in the form of a motion to table this? You know, to, well, basically to move to this conversation.
It's just a discussion anyway. So I don't think we have to do a.
We'll just wait till the retreat.
We just continue the discussion at the retreat, yeah.
We'll put that on the topic.
Yeah.
Definitely, yeah.
Because it's gonna take a lot of time to do that now and it's, there's a lot to go through. I don't even have the other.
They have presentations to do.
Okay.
Yeah. We wanna be able to. Yeah, no, the, the main thing with this is the school board members are remembering, remembering that we're bound by the Virginia Constitution and law and that we answer to our constituents, not to private organizations or, I mean, we can take ideas from private organizations and things like that.
Right.
But we're following the Constitution, we're following the law and we're answering to our constituents.
Yeah.
And it's, basically that's what our focus is gonna be.
Right.
All righty, thank you very much along those lines for that discussion. Now, presentation.
If you'll just give me a half a second if I might.
Sure.
Looked everything over and sort of got myself out of place here for one second.
Too many papers.
You know what? At this point, we're just gonna go with it.
Okay.
All right, so thank you, first of all, thank you, Ms. Fairman and board members for all of your feedback and discussion this evening. We do have a number of presentations this evening. Mr. Bowen has actually the first two. He's gonna share first information on the FY twenty-five budget, then he's gonna transition to the proposed capital improvement program presentation, which we have one change. So Mr. Bowen, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Dr. Shandor. I want to be the first to say Madam Chair.
Thank you very much.
Dr. Shandor. So this evening for my first presentation, this is budget update, I will just say that usually when I'm presenting this budget update in the work session in January, I'm usually providing details from the governor's proposed budget and those impacts on Y C S D. However, just on Friday, we received a calculation tool from, from Department of Education and staff is still sorting through those details. So the presentation this evening is kind of an oversight of the state budget process since we have new board members to talk about the state process, the biennial process, and then some of the high-level actions that the state has taken, that the governor has proposed for, for K twelve. So just for the state budget process, there's three phases, the budget development, the appropriation and the execution. I'll focus on the appropriation piece. The governor's already released the budget that occurred in December. On Wednesdays, the General Assembly is going to meet. They'll convene for the twenty twenty-four session and this will be the long session. And this is where things really start to accelerate for the budget process. And then, once they, once they complete their session in March, then the final reconciled budget between the House and the Senate then is, it's approved, it's then forwarded to the governor. And then for the execution piece of that, the state agencies, this Department of Planning and Budget, Department of Accounts, and of course, not listed up there is the Virginia Department of Education, they're the, they're the agencies that execute the governor's budget. One thing I did wanna point out here is that the legislative action ends just prior to the school boards approving the, the budget, the superintendent's budget. And so what happens is, is that we're, we're basing everything on what the governor's proposed, and then the board will approve that, and then we will come back in either late May at that business meeting or in June, and then we will make amendments to, to our budget and adopt the final budget at that time. So the state biennial budget process, just to focus on the even years, this is the twenty twenty-four session. There's two budgets that the, that staff will be considering. One is the caboose fill, which is the second year of the biennial, this is the second year of the current biennial budget. And so we will be making adjustments to the current year. And then, more importantly, we'll be focusing on the first year of the new biennial budget. And these were, were significant changes will occur for next year. And some of the significant factors affecting the twenty-five budget include the re-benchmarking process, updating the local composite index, updates to the Virginia retirement system rates, average daily membership, and then, of course, the state local economy. I'm not gonna talk much about the economy, other than to say that the state is recognizing that there is potential for a recession in calendar year twenty twenty-four. So we do expect in this calendar year that we're gonna see some slowing down in the economy. So really, real quick, what is re-benchmarking? This is where the state looks at costs from the previous two years. So the base year for this biennial budget is the cost from fiscal year twenty twenty-two. And then they look at the cost for standards of quality, minimum staffing requirements, related support services, and prevailing cost updates. And then they, they have a computer model that updates those costs, and that generally means additional funding for, for school divisions. And the local composite index, this is the index that's assigned to each locality. The composite index is calculated using these three indicators, true value, real property, adjusted gross income, and taxable retail sales. None of this information school divisions provide, V D O E with this. This all comes from either the Weldon Cooper Center or the Department of Taxation. And this is the history of local composite index for York County. As, as the rate goes down, it means that the state pays more for its share of the cost of education and local government pays less. So you can see here, in twenty twenty twelve and twenty twenty fourteen, twenty fourteen, this was, our, our rates shot up significantly. And this is because the recession, the Great Recession, started in Northern Virginia before it started in the rest of the state. So Northern Virginia was starting to recover, while as the state, the rest of the state, they saw their local composite index increase sharply. And so it's taken us several bienniums to get to the point that we were below the pre-recession. And so our L C I for twenty twenty-four, twenty-six biennial is thirty-five point five four percent. These are the Virginia retirement system rates for teachers, our professional employees. And what happens here with these rates is that the V R S Board of Trustees, they certify the rates, and they certify the rates based on actuarial reviews of, of the fund itself. However, it's the General Assembly that approves the rates. And so you can see here that there's been a number of years, and this was about the time of the Great Recession, that the General Assembly was not adopting or approving what was being certified by the Board of Trustees. And this really created the hole that we have seen over the last ten years with V R S. And so we are still recovering from that. I believe it was in twenty twenty that the state made a half a billion dollar investment into V R S. And in twenty twenty-five, it would be making a hundred and fifteen million dollar investment into the V R S. So we're still recovering from, from actions that were taken during the Great Recession. So oftentimes when we talk in budget, we'll talk about average daily membership and enrollment. However, for finance purposes, average daily membership is, is how we are funded. And this is the average daily, basically is the average daily enrollment over a period of time, and that period of time is the start of school through March thirty-first. Enrollment is the actual number of students enrolled in school on a specific date, because our enrollment changes, change weekly, certainly changes monthly. And historically, what we've seen is, as we progress through the year, we will see our enrollment increase.
I have a question on use of the term membership. Are you talking about students actually physically in school as membership or students that are on the roll?
Students that are on the roll, so students enrolled.
Okay, that's the membership.
Yes.
It's one of those things that you look at it and go, then why don't you say enrollment?
These are V D O E terms.
Ah, okay.
So you'll hear me talk about enrollment through the budget process, but when I talk enrollment, I'm, I'm talking about average daily membership.
Okay, thank you.
This is the history of our average daily membership. Something just to point out here is in twenty twenty, we, in twenty twenty-one, we were expecting to eclipse thirteen thousand and then COVID hit. We lost six hundred and seventy students. And, and we are expecting to eclipse that this year, fiscal year twenty twenty-four.
Do we know why we lost those? Is it the homeschooling or they moved out of the state? Why was that due to a drop?
We saw a significant increase in homeschool enrollment, but we also lost students permanently and they shifted in other areas. We saw a shift of enrollment to Northern Virginia because those were where the jobs were. And we also saw less transition of our military bodies. And so this is just the high level of what the governor's proposed budget does for K twelve. There's the re-benchmarking of education, and for fiscal year twenty-five, it adds additional seventy-two point six million dollars and will add an eighty-seven point nine million dollars for FY twenty-six. There is a two percent compensation adjustment, however, it's only being proposed in FY twenty-six. I mentioned about the teacher retirement, V R S liabilities, so this money doesn't come to schools, this is gonna be a direct payment from the state to the pension fund, but it's a hundred and fifteen million dollars. There's some technical adjustments and updates to sales tax revenue. They're supporting expanding reading specialists in the staffing standard. So this could, once we look through those details, this could mean that they're providing us additional money for additional reading specialists. But I will point out that we currently exceed the SOQ requirements for reading specialists as we do in many other positions. So it doesn't necessarily mean we have to add physicians, but we will certainly look at that as an option when we look at our complete budget and priorities and the mandates.
I have another question on that. When the governor puts money in for certain things like this, are they mandated things that are then only funded for a short period of time that we then have to pick up the funding down the road? Is that what some of this is?
Typically, no. Typically, when, if it's a change to the standards of quality, and so what they look at is, let's say, for example, you have to have one librarian for every one thousand, one thousand, one thousand students. And then, so that, that's been the standard. Now, what they have done, what they did during the Great Recession is they waived the standard. And so many school divisions, what they were doing, if the librarian left, they were filling the position with a par educator, just to save money, because everybody was doing what they could just to survive at that time. Those are the kind of changes that you might see, but if they've made a change, permanent change to the SOQ, rarely do you see that unchanged.
Okay.
But as far as the funding goes, when they give us a, when they fund us for another reading specialist, how that funding comes to us is based on what is the prevailing salary for that position? And so if we only funded, say, for example, one position, so we look at what the prevailing salary rate is, and it might be fifty-five thousand dollars. Then we apply the local composite index to that. So our rate is, say, thirty-five thousand, we pick up thirty-five thousand of that cost and the state funds us for sixty-five percent of that cost. And so even though we're funded for one position, we're not receiving the full cost of that So there's a, the governor's proposed a one percent bonus for instruction, and that is for twenty twenty-five. Now, what, we understand that that bonus can be used to supplement a permanent raise, even though this is one-time money. The fact that they are providing us money in the second year for a permanent raise, this money could be used if we have sufficient funds to do so. The state's developing a new state assessment plan. This is something that'll be allocated to the Department of Education. And then there's very small amounts for industry-recognized credentials and for career and technical education programs.
Phil, can I have you go back real quick on the one percent bonus for instructional? Is that for those people willing to take that position, getting a bonus, or is that just, hey, extra money? I'm not really sure when you say bonus.
So this is, the, the way the technical language reads, it's a one percent bonus for all SOQ and support positions.
Okay.
And what that means is, we, we have about, when the state provides us the funding for it, it's about fifty percent or less than fifty percent of the money that's needing to provide everybody a bonus. So it's, it won't cover every teacher because every, we have more teachers than the SOQ standards require. So every teacher that we have above the SOQ standard, we pay a hundred percent. And every support position we have above the SOQ standards, we pay a hundred percent. So that's what, and that's what makes it challenging to provide the raises. The governor could come out and say, we're gonna pay twenty, twenty percent raise. I, we'd have to come up with a majority of that money.
And just to clarify, the one percent bonus, I think you were asking, is not for, to give bonuses to new employees, but current employees?
Yeah. Yes, well, we haven't looked at that language real closely. What it'll, it'll probably mean is that everybody who is, as of record of the date that the bonus has to be provided, or be provided and be eligible for that.
So current.
Now, there was during COVID, they said that if you were a new employee, you were not eligible, you had to be an employee of record as of June thirty, the previous fiscal year.
Yeah, I remember that, yeah.
And then just real quick, the, the budget calendar, we do have a public forum on the twenty-ninth, and then the superintendent will present his budget on February twelfth.
With that, with the forum, can we do a better job of advertising the forum and getting the information out to the people than what happened with the forums that were just, what was it, two months ago? Where we had three people show at one and four people showed at the other.
We certainly can. What we, and we're, we're open to any and all feedback. This is a forum at the, at the board meeting, correct?
This is a forum at the, at the board meeting, correct?
Correct, that is correct.
Right, so this, this is when they come, yeah, there's a, yeah. There's a difference between when we go and do a budget forum, we're doing listening and getting feedback. And I'm open to that feedback too, because we have tried multiple ways, we've tried it in multiple schools, multiple zones, multiple ways, multiple ways of advertising. As I shared with you all, the way to get a lot of people to come to one of those is, you mentioned you were, you're looking at cutting a particular thing, and then everyone will come.
Everyone will come.
Right, so this is when they come to the actual general meeting, correct?
So, and then if they're going to make any comments on it, though, then they're limited to that three minutes during the public comment period, as opposed to an actual forum focused on this, where it can be a back and forth, and it can be longer.
So wouldn't be, would it be a question and answer session, or would it be just like comments?
So for this public forum, this one is just public comments at the, at the next business meeting. So that's what we do, too, in the fall. And I will tell you, that's not uncommon, what we see, this is my third school division. The only time we had a significant turnout for a budget forum was during COVID, when I was in Pecosin, and we filled up a library, because we were looking at cutting, everything was on the table. Arts, music, foreign languages, CTE programs, everything was on the table. So we had a, a full house.
You mean during the recession?
I'm sorry.
You were with us, you were with us during the recession.
During the Great Recession.
It's all just blended together.
Well, it's one of those things, I know several of us have talked about having our own town hall meetings within our particular district. So the information in this could be presented at one of our town hall meetings if we put that together, to get more of the feedback for, from the constituents, where they're not limited to that three minutes.
Correct.
And it can be an actual back and forth discussion, if needed.
However you want to structure that.
Okay.
Okay, that concludes the budget presentation, we'll be happy to answer any additional questions.
We're going to jump into the CIP, for when Mr. Bowen was in Pecosin during COVID. I can't resist, Mr. Bowen.
Speaking of Madam Chair, members of the board. So this evening, this evening's presentation on the capital improvement plan is, just to update you on one small change that we've had. We're at the home stretch, the board is set to approve this at the January twenty-second meeting. And so I just wanted to call your attention.
Twenty-nine.
Sorry. I just did want to call your attention to this, to this change. And on the elementary school projects, and this is for fiscal year twenty-four, this is at Walla Mill, two hundred and eighty-three thousand there in green. That, that green text means it is cash contribution. All the others are, indicate that it's bond debt service. But we, when we presented this back in the fall, and then again in December, we were not aware that there were some environmental considerations that need, that need be addressed. And so the feedback we've got, it's going to cost us about two hundred and eighty-three thousand to, to take care of that. And so that, that's the one change that we're adding to.
Kind of environmental.
Yeah, my understanding is, Mr. Delai, correct me if I miss, you know, BMPs for mitigation for wetland destruction and that type of thing. We have permeable soil, we have to make sure that we meet the codes, and so that would mean there has to be extra work on the property. Now, one thing that we can't predict because codes change is, whatever we would do there to prep, is that might buy us credits for when we go for permanent construction. And so we may be actually getting an advantage here, because what we'd be preparing for a portable would then pay off for us when we go to do a permanent building. And it would, we'd be getting ahead of the inflationary pressure of five or six years. But did I hit that, Mr. Delai?
That was the question I was going to ask, some of these things that we may do with this money, we can use that, what we use to mitigate when we go to add a new wing for annual school.
So I would also add that this is a six-year plan. What we're showing, and what the board will be approving, is for fiscal year twenty-five. Fiscal year twenty-four has already been approved. The other thing is, is that when we present this to the county, Dr. Carroll presents this to the county in the fall, and the funding on this, on the schedule, all six years, has to fit within the county's debt service model. If it doesn't, then they would have to go out to referendum or the vote, voters, to approve the CIP plan. So one thing I'll, I'll point out to you is that in the middle schools here in twenty-seven, twenty-eight, and twenty-nine, Queens Lake, county administrator asked us to add a million dollars for each of those years to help with their debt service model. Now, because it's in the out years, we felt that, that's comfortable, we're comfortable with that. There's a number of sources that we could tap into to do that. We have Revenue Stabilization Fund, which has about eight million dollars. That's, that's the school's rainy day fund. We don't typically like to use that particularly in an upcoming recession, but it is there if we need to. Most likely what will happen is, at the end of year, at the end of each year, we have a fund balance, but by law, that, those funds revert back to the county. Our relationship, and historically, those funds, we've just requested they be returned to us, and then we will dedicate those to either CIP technologies, school classes, textbooks, very large one-time purchases.
Could you do me a favor and explain, I know you explained it to us last week, but if you could explain the difference between, you know, the green is the cash, the black is the bond, so that those citizens who are listening can understand what that difference is up here, and why we have those two?
Do you want to go to the last page? Show the bottom line really quickly, that may be, that may help, this one.
Okay. Sure.
So as, as you can see, the, the green text there is, represents cash funding, and the black there is bond debt service funding. The majority of what we, what the county funds for us is debt service. Now, school divisions cannot borrow money by code, so the county has to do that on the park a half. But it certainly makes sense when we have cash available, and we have an emergency project, and the bonds are already tied up to other projects, that we look at our Revenue Stabilization Fund, and we look at end-of-year funds to make that cash contribution. Because when we do that, then it lowers the total debt service on the county. And generally, if we can keep that low, then that might come back to us in operational dollars. So this is kind of, while we talk about capital and operating budgets at the same time, even though they're separate, we like to tie them together, because one does affect the other. And that's the update for this evening. Happy to answer any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Bowen.
Thank you.
Presentation is Dr. Dave Wrights, who's going to present some information related to the licensed staff compensation.
Thank you, Dr. Shandor, Madam Chair, members of the board. This evening, I'm going to be presenting to you our annual compensation update. You will see many numbers tonight, and many of those numbers are beginning salaries and ending salaries, and how they compare to our Peninsula Regional partners. And tonight's compensation update will focus on our licensed employees, while all employees are important. Eighty, over fifty percent of our employees fall within the licensed category. Teachers and administrators are also in, represented in this group, and historically, our salary is a driving force for recruiting and retention. And for those positions, however, we're seeing that working conditions and supportive culture are becoming more prominent. VDOE categorizes YCSD into the Region Two for state reporting, and Region Two includes Virginia Beach, Norfolk, Suffolk, Olive White, Newport News, Chesapeake, Hampton, Fort Smith, Williamsburg, James City County, and Pecosin. When you're talking about our Peninsula region, that comprises Hampton, Newport News, Williamsburg, James City County, Pecosin, and Gloucester, which is where the majority of our lateral moves come from. Here you'll see some lateral moves from our surrounding divisions in 2024. Forty-four percent of our new hires come from our region, with an average of seven and a half years' experience. This slide shows the divisions in our region, including the number of students served in the state ranking, with the per pupil expenses for each division in the regional rank. YCSD's fall memberships, you can see York County is highlighted, and the 2023 K-12 fall membership is how many students were actually sitting in seats on September thirtieth. That ranks us twenty-third out of one hundred and thirty-two divisions, and tenth in our per pupil expenditures out of eleven. Per pupil expenditures is a formula of a combination of state, local, and federal funding.
Do you have the actual formula for how they come up with the twelve thousand seven hundred twenty-one, what the actual mathematical calculation is?
I don't have the actual mathematical, but I just know it's that combination of those three different, the state, the federal, and it goes into the local, and that budget, I'm not sure percentage-wise, I can get that.
Mr. Bowen, do you have that information?
Yeah, so it's a combination of, it's a combination of state, local, and federal, but it, but it excludes debt service and capital projects.
So I guess what I'm, I'm asking, two, two different questions. One, when we're compared, are all of those divisions, their calculations are exactly the same? So how much money that goes towards a student is teacher salaries, the other executive salaries, the, I mean, building costs? I mean, I don't know, you know, actually seeing what that calculation is, what, what determines that twelve thousand seven hundred twenty-one dollars? Because that sounds great, and a lot of people will look at that and go, wow, you know, we're getting more value than, you know, some of the private schools and their tuition. But is that money actually reaching the student, or, you know, how are the numbers actually?
So it's, it's total operation and cost, it includes salaries and benefits of all employees. It includes operations, includes technology purchases. What it excludes is like, the, the capital outlay for technology. So if we're buying
Servers.
A five-hundred-thousand-dollar server, then that part is deducted from, from the calculation, and that's the calculation for, for every school division.
This slide here is, now is in the order of regional per pupil, in which we are ranked, again, tenth out of the eleven. Nevertheless, York County remains a destination division, as we continue to remain number one in the region, and number three in the state in those niche ratings, based on academics, teachers, clubs, diversity, college prep, and administration. This slide shows the divisions in our peninsula. You will see the same numbers in how we rank in our K-12 per pupil and our K-12 membership. This one takes the membership, the same numbers, but it shows where the per pupil expenditures are. However, even though YCSD doesn't rank high with our per pupil expenditures within our region, our utilization of those funds continue to rank us positively. And with the niche ratings, again, with number one in the region and two in the state, and some of those contributing factors are, we have low to student-teacher ratios, and three percent of our teachers are either in their first or second year.
What is our average student-teacher ratio right now?
I don't know the exact, I can give you a guesstimate, it's probably around twenty-one, but it, but it varies per level
Right.
And per class. So, and we use those ratios when we do, when we do allocations for teachers within each one of those buildings, too. We try to keep those low.
And that's an average?
Yes. Now, we're going to zoom in our compensation comparison, comparisons within our region. As you can see, the majority of our licensed staff hold a master's degree or higher. When you compare our region, very few steps in our pay plan rank in the, in the top three. Later in the presentation, I'm going to be sharing the breakdown of, within our region. And steps are not always aligned to years of service, they indicate the years of relative Now, we're going to look at the Peninsula comparator market, and how YCSD ranks in the top three. If you look at the master's degree, master's plus thirty, and doctorate, the percent of where we are in the top three is ninety, one hundred, and one hundred percent.
Quickly ask, when you said relative service, could you define that?
Some of our relative service can be compared, we don't necessarily, the steps that you will see are compared to the years that you have been working. So we can actually bring in some people with some relative service that are comparable to working in the classroom, or working with students in the educational setting. This one is for our bachelor's degree. Here, the divisions on the peninsula are the starting salary, and you can see the steps are zero through thirty on the left. The blue represents and indicates our top three salaries within the peninsula. You can see, and we want to point out that York County has, in the past year, has a higher starting salary than one of our larger competitors of Williamsburg, Williamsburg, James City County. This is our master's degree, and as you can see on the right-hand side, how many of those licensed staff there are, and where we are within the steps of the top three. And again, the blue indicating us being in the top three in many of those categories. If you remember from earlier, when I talked about the lateral moves, many of our teachers that are coming into YCSD are seven and a half years' experience. So they're a little bit further down on those steps, and that allows us the opportunity to be more competitive with our counterparts. Here we are with our master's degree plus thirty, and we're all blue on that category, indicating us being in the top three. And then the same with our doctorate, being in the top three in all of those steps. Everything presented this evening was for 2023, 2024, and this chart is a summary of the licensed staff compensation history for the past five years. The chart shows how YCSD is committed to ensuring a fair and equitable compensation practice to maintain those competitive salaries. We do have some next steps coming up, and some of those next steps are, we are tracking our applicants for lateral moves and years of experience. We also have an ongoing regional and peninsula comparator review, we're always looking at how we're comparing to within our region and within the peninsula. Continuous opportunities for staff input. This year, we have started in August, focus groups, where we are going out from the HR department, and we're talking to employees that are brand-new to YCSD, and asking them questions about their support within YCSD, and how we can continue to improve. We are looking at exit interviews and surveys, and then we're also, next month, we will be going into our non-licensed salary review cycle and benefits, which we'll be talking about next month. And that is it for this evening, and if you guys have any questions, I'll entertain those.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Wrights, appreciate that. All right, we are down to three presentations left, so next we have our Chief Operations Officer, Dr. Carroll, who is going to present on the Elementary Attendance Balancing Update. Dr. Carroll.
Thank you, Dr. Shandor, Madam Chair, members of the board. Tonight's going to be a very brief presentation. I did something very similar on, in November at the work session there. Just want to make sure that we continue to remind you that this is coming, it's coming back, and I'll talk about timeline tonight. So first of all, I want to remind everybody what the purpose of our work is here. We have, when we started to work on the addition of Seaford Elementary School, we were seeing some very tight enrollment pressures, and many of our lower county elementary schools, and then up in Effer County, the brooder has been under a lot of pressure. And so we started down this path to start looking at rezoning, so that both, we can make better use of space that we now have, and, and also to make use of additional space. So that expanded space is that there, when we change the programming for the Extend program, we decentralized to have an impact on five of the elementary schools, opening up those classrooms and extending it there. And then also we've added that additional space at Seaford. So one of the things before you all see the plans is we have a stakeholder committee that's been working and evaluating each of the plans that the consultant brings us. And the consultant is bringing five plans for your consideration for balancing our elementary zones. So we have representatives from 20 families, so two from each elementary zone. And I'm happy to report that five meetings we've had so far.
Two from each elementary school.
Right.
Elementary schools.
Well, zones that go to that school, yeah. Not, not the, not the four high school zones, but each, each elementary, yes, that's true. And I'm happy to report that 67, we've had a 67% attendance by those family members to be taking part in the process. So the timeline so far, I've already shared this with you in November, those areas in gray we've already worked through. And so now we're in the December-January timeframe. The consultant is finalizing the options. We have one more to present to the committee. And then also the committee will be working this month to finalize its recommendations for you. And then in February, we'll be presenting those options to the board. And we'll probably publish this around the beginning of the month and put it out so that the community will be able to see with some narrative to what they're looking at. And we will have our consultant here at the next work session, February 12th, to present it to you all and make the presentation of the plans. And then we will have a public hearing, much like the budget forum that Mr. Bowen mentioned earlier. So at the February regular session, there will be public comment, and then there'll be a public hearing just dedicated to the plans that are before you. And then in March, at the work session, you'll have the first opportunity to have some public discussion about where you're leaning or what you're thinking or whatever you want to talk about these plans. And then, but we're expecting you to vote in March at the regular meetings. And there will also be public, at the regular public comment, if anybody wants to give me any comment at that time. So there's two opportunities for public comment and two opportunities for you for public discussion. And then immediately after that, we will begin communicating with the affected families depending on your decisions as far as the rezoning. And then in August, of course, then it becomes real. And that concludes my presentation. I want for many questions you may have.
I just have one, are all affected families being informed of who their representatives are with their contact information so they can have input to those representatives?
Well, we don't know who the affected families are yet because depending on one of those plans, whichever way it goes, we don't know who that is because it'll be, it could be partial sections of each of the elementary zones. Also, we don't typically put names out of people that are working on those committees so that they don't also have an undue attention.
Get flooded with everything. That's for us to handle.
I would just add, if there are citizens or parents of elementary students who have questions or concerns related to this, please use our Let's Talk platform.
Absolutely.
That information will be sent directly to Dr. Carroll and he will be in direct response with those folks.
And one other question, and I want to clarify, typically when would you rezoning? I've been through one already, this will be the second one. We typically do a grandfather type thing, so can you explain that?
Yeah, we haven't gotten to that yet, but typically there is something with the fifth graders and fifth graders and all their siblings where they would be allowed to stay at the, at the previous school.
Just provide transportation.
For that year, but they've got to provide transportation.
And that would be something we would vote on, but that's typically what we've done in the past to help ease the process.
We haven't worked through that yet.
Right. I just throw that out there, makes it, makes it more palatable sometimes for families. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Carroll.
All right, our next presentation is going to be Ms. Christina Head, who is our director, Associate Director of Elementary School, and she's going to discuss the Virginia Literacy Act.
Hey, good evening, members of the board and Dr. Shandor. So tonight I'll share an overview of the Virginia Literacy Act. And so the Virginia Literacy Act was commonly referred to as VLA, was signed into law for kindergarten through third grade in 2022, and then expanded to kindergarten through eighth grade in 2023. And it's among the most comprehensive literacy policies in the nation. And it aims as the objective of, the objective of improving literacy outcomes for our students in Virginia. And it requires that school divisions submit a division literacy plan that outlines exactly how they'll meet the five key components of this law. And so on this slide here, you see the five components of the Virginia Literacy Act. And I'm going to go into detail about each one of these in this presentation. So the first component of the Virginia Literacy Act requires that all Virginia students receive high-quality, evidence-based literacy instruction based and grounded in the science of reading. And the science of reading is an approach to teaching reading based on the five pillars that you see here. And science-based research shows that students need to be explicitly taught in these five areas. And this is not much of a change for our school division as we have had a very strong literacy model and we have been incorporating evidence-based literacy instruction for many years now.
I have a question for you with the definition of the evidence-based. I know we had discussed this earlier. What are the actual, do you have the actual statistics of success rates of the science-based research? Because evidence-based can be either statistical, where you have 80% success of a particular group. Or evidence-based unfortunately has been redefined as if one person out of a group has had some success, they can call it evidence-based. And obviously, that is not as good as if you have actual statistical proof that 80% or 90% of the students succeed under this particular program versus this program.
Right, so the Virginia Literacy Act hasn't really fine-tuned down to that percentage or how they calculate the evidence-based instruction. But it's, with the science-based research, they really have looked at that closely to make sure that the evidence shows that it's proven and it has produced results in those, in that area. So we will definitely be able to reach out to VDOE to find out what they've used for that. Okay, so the second component here ensures that school divisions use only evidence-based and science-based curriculum and materials. And so VDOE collaborated with the Virginia Literacy Partnership at the University of Virginia to conduct a robust review of literacy programs from vendors and textbook publishers to ensure that they are aligned to science-based research. And so from this extensive review, VDOE developed a list of seven textbook vendors of literacy programs. And the VLA requires us to use one of those textbook vendors. And Virginia Board of Education approved that list, and they also recommended that school divisions use their All In Virginia funding to purchase one of these resources. And so here on this screen, you see the seven that the VDOE approved for school divisions to use. And a group of principals, a small group of principals and our English coordinator and reading specialist and a teacher, we took this list and we narrowed it down to three of them, which is Core Knowledge Language Arts, H M H Into Reading, Virginia, and Open Court Reading. And now we'll go through the process of adoption of textbooks and purchasing those for next school year. So let me tell you a little about that adoption process. So the adoption process is called Instructional Materials Review, or also I M R. And it requires us to follow policy I I A A, which is Textbook Selection, Adoption, and Purchase. And the last time that we purchased a literacy program was 10 years ago. And so as you can see in this timeline, in fall, we narrowed down the list of seven from VDOE to three for our consideration for adoption. And right now, schools, all the elementary schools have those three textbook publishers' materials, and they're using the I M R rubric that's in our policy to review the programs and pick their top choice. And also in our policy, it's required that we provide our parents and our interested citizens to have an opportunity to come and review the recommended materials. And so what we'll do is we'll send out a communication, in our school divisions' communication, that will provide parents to have public review and provide feedback during the period of January 22nd to February 9th.
Will this be like just a specific examples or are we going to have access to the entire workbook?
So you'll have the examples, the review for each grade level, for kindergarten through fifth grade, as well as the online access to those materials and thorough with each, each of the individual books and guides for those books, instruction.
Okay, so you're saying it's online, but we're getting hard books?
Yes, teachers love to have hard books in their hand when they're reviewing things. They like to see how it's laid out and in order to make the recommendations. So they have the hard copy reviews for, at the schools, each of the 10 schools. And then they also have access to look on it online if they so desire.
But the public won't have access to the hard?
The public can come into the school board office and they'll have access to look at the hard copies.
Okay, well, that's one of the things that I was asked, and this is from previous reviews. Constituents were saying it was only available during the actual school days or the workdays. And they were working, some of the military were working till six o'clock at night. By the time they get out, they can't see the review. Is there any way that we can have it at TAB library and York library to have access? I know they have conference rooms there, or they have the smaller rooms so that it, those people would be able to access to review it during times when they're not working and it could be open, as well as then they're also not having to go through the Fort Knox check-in at the school board office, which I understand the need for, but it does make it a little bit difficult for coming in to review things.
And we're also going to, these three weeks, we're going to provide an evening opportunity from a certain time period of the evening for those parents that are working that would like to come see that hard copy of the books and to review that as well.
Yeah, see, I think one evening though might not hit everybody. Whereas if you can have it at the libraries, you have more of a chance of hitting more people because of the easier access time-wise as well as location-wise.
Well, the other thing to think about is not only, our county is not just tabbed graphing, right? So we have a whole other community.
We've also got, you have the Williamsburg library area.
So, so my suggestion would be let us, let staff talk about how we want to do that and certainly move forward. I think it's a great idea to do the library, but I don't want to leave out Mr. Shae for him.
Sorry about that.
Any amount of materials is also something.
Yeah, it's a lot of materials to.
Six grade levels, hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of books, so.
We'll just have to figure out and coordinate and organize.
These are small books, virtually.
Yeah, I think we're thinking in our mind it's one book.
There's many parts.
Or three books per library, basically, or something like that. No, it's, it's quite extensive. But we can certainly look at a plan and report back to you all.
And then in February, we will bring the recommended textbook publishers' literacy program to you for approval. And then once approved, and we'll purchase using, like I mentioned, the All In Virginia funds. But then March through June, we'll do the hard work of really revising our local curriculum and our documents so that we have things in place and ready for August when teachers come in return.
I have a question on you saying the All In Virginia funds. That's, is that a one-time thing to buy? What if we need to buy in the future? Is that then all on us?
That is, that is on us. But we do have a textbook fund for that purpose. We have a textbook fund to purchase new materials, and then we also have a textbook fund to refurbish materials as needed. So oftentimes, like currently, when we have enrollment growth, we have to purchase more materials of the things we've purchased in the past because we are, we try to be very fiscally responsible and purchase really just what we need. We give ourselves a little bit of a cushion, but oftentimes we have to go back if enrollment grows, we'll go back and purchase more.
We've also, many times during the last 10 years or so, have used end-of-year funds to purchase textbooks. So the reversion from the county has been a big part of supporting our work.
And so the third component of the Virginia Literacy Act is the required statewide professional development. And this is to ensure that all teachers in Virginia have a common understanding of evidence-based literacy instruction based on science of reading. And also the Virginia Literacy Act expectations, they really want them, teachers to understand those. In York County, we've been really ahead of the game, we knew this was coming. And so we were very strategic with our ESSR funds and used a big chunk of that to provide a science-based training called Letters. You may have heard of that. Letters is an intensive six-hour credit course that is year-long with online and instant trainings. It's grounded in reading research and the development of a reader. And so 97% of our kindergarten through second grade teachers have had this training or have, will complete it by the end of the school year. So they'll have a solid background when it comes to this Virginia Literacy Act's expectations. And then all this school year, all the reading specialists in Virginia, they've been going through a training this school year so that they can be really there to support teachers next school year when the full implementation of this. In addition, the state will provide options for school divisions for that required statewide training starting this summer. And the fourth component requires that we are partnering and involving our families in our literacy program. And so families are required, we're required to make sure that our families are involved in the development of student reading plans for those students that do not meet the state benchmarks. And we, this has been a common practice for York County for some years. And also, this VLA is going to provide free online resources for parents and families to use at home to help with their children with reading or learning to read. And so we'll definitely, you know, make sure that's included and accessible for our families. And the VLA also requires that our Division of Literacy Plan has strategies included to incorporate our families, community members in our literacy program. As you can see here in these pictures, we have always had literacy family nights. Our Title I schools are required to have a literacy family event each quarter. Even in the summer, we have literacy offerings for our families and to come in. You can see the bottom picture on the right. That was one of our summer literacy bingo nights at the Yorktown Library, and it was a widely attended event. And the last component of the Virginia Literacy Act involves higher education with college and universities. So the VLA will require teacher educator programs to provide coursework and a final assessment to show mastery of evidence-based literacy instruction before they can gain their licensure to be a teacher or for a reading specialist. And so this slide is really a summary of the implications that will be on our division within Virginia Literacy Act for next school year. And we've already begun to prepare for this. We know that we are planning for that Virginia Literacy Act-acquired statewide training. But also, our early literacy screener called the PALS has been completely revamped and updated. And it will, the new one will be called the Virginia Language and Literacy Screener System. And so we'll need to train our teachers on the use of that in the platform, as well as training the teachers on how to use all the materials that will be adopting and purchasing for next school year. And then lastly, of course, integrating the new Virginia English SOLs that will be approved by the Virginia Board of Education in March. And then we'll be expected to go full implementation with those in the, in the fall of this school year. So there's a lot of work that we are really planning for that, talking to other school divisions around us to see how they're doing that. We just had a call today on that from collaboration sessions where I'm going to a meeting in June, next week. The state is providing a meeting for directors to help them plan through this.
Any questions for Ms. Head?
Yes, actually, if you could go back to the last one. Is there a way for board members as well as the community to see what that assessment is with the V A L L S S?
So there's like selected school divisions around us that are piloting that. So they are already gaining some information from that piloting, that they're changing some things. So once they have that finalized, we are going to make that available to teachers, especially for that training as soon as possible. And then we'll be informing our families of that change as well as providing them. And then we'll be informing our families of that change, as well as providing them the assessment results. And we often go over those results at their first conference in the fall.
I'm not really talking about the results of it. I think that's great, and yeah, obviously, we need to be letting them know the results. But to see what the actual assessment and to see what the questions, to see what's being asked, to see what's being assessed-
So the different components of the subtests for each grade.
Right.
And so we can have that in our communication as well.
Great.
We met today with Virginia Beach and a couple other school divisions. Virginia Beach was asked to pilot the VALS. So we got to hear from their chief academic officer about how that implementation has been going. Of course, they can't share but so much with us, but we are anxious as well to see that because it's very helpful for a teacher to see what they're administering and to feel confident in giving that assessment. When we roll out assessments before, we really try to make sure that we are providing as much support to our teachers in that initial, you know, time that they're given that first assessment for the year. So we'll probably look at adding additional support, and we've offered the four substitutes, things like that, just to help them feel more comfortable in the process.
Yeah. I think with the actual assessment of it, I know it's in my wheelhouse as an English teacher, you know, I want to see what it actually looks like, what they're actually asking. But also, parents have a right to see what's being asked of their student, how it's being assessed, how it's being used, what other things are in there.
Absolutely. And the creators of this new VALS, the Virginia Literacy Partnerships, they have on their webpage, it's called the Value Series, and that has a complete source for families, teachers, and there's also a video explaining VALS and what that's going to be and the change on that, on that resource, so we can think about-
Incorporate that into our communications with families.
That'd be great.
And this is direction from the VDOE to get rid of the PALS and go to this new-
Right.
Which is typical to do that. But the other thing was, the letters training, we're going to continue that, correct?
So we have, while our ESAR grant has diminished and will go away, we have reading specialists, our elementary literacy coach, they, some of those are, some of them, they have the ability, they're a facilitator for letters training. So they can provide in some sort of capacity that, that training or that support in that area for teachers that do not come to us already having that. Many do, our surrounding school divisions have also been doing letters.
And I'm not saying that the PALS getting rid of it and going to something new is necessarily bad or anything like that. Change is sometimes good. And hopefully, the VDOE has done their research and done the right thing with what they're doing.
Yeah.
We don't have any control over that, unfortunately. But anyway, thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Head. All right, Dr. Sherlock, it's all up to you. Bring us home. Last presentation, bring us home. All right, so middle school schedule update is going to be Dr. Sherlock.
All right, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Chandar. I have an update on our, on the work being surrounding our middle school schedule tonight. I'd like to start with some background information and then the work being done since or November 4th, maybe, last week. I'd like to first start with our current bell schedule. So all of our students, all of our middle school students have eight classes. That's spread over two days, an A day and a B day. And we have four periods per day, each 90 minutes long. Though they're 90 minutes long regardless of the content. It could be Spanish, math, English, doesn't matter. Our sixth graders, all sixth graders have daily English and daily math. Our seventh graders, this changes from seventh and eighth grade, where only students with grade-level math have that, have daily math. They no longer have daily English, nor if they have algebra or geometry or high school level course, math course, they no longer have that daily math. Now, students can earn high school credit in our middle schools for those classes, Spanish, oral language for the most part, and those high school credit, math credit courses. The history of our bell schedule, it's been around about 15 years, so it's, it's pretty good. However, it started in 2009, when we transitioned from a seventh period a day, which is, I'm kind of more true to, that's what I'm used to. And about six years later, a committee was formed, because they want to make sure that the, that the schedule was still meeting the needs of our kids, right? And so they did research, they, they looked at different schedules from surrounding divisions, and they actually did a decision analysis of a number of different schedules. And two years later, unfortunately, that the discussion was tabled, there were some significant staffing concerns, and there was honestly just a lot of competing priorities at the time. And so that was tabled in 2017. Let's fast forward to last year, where our middle school principals and actually a number of staff started raising questions about why not let's consider this middle school schedule again to make sure it's still meeting the needs of our kids, of our sixth, seventh, and eighth graders. And so the three main reasons here on, on the screen are really what they were looking at. They wanted to see if it was possible to get English daily back for, not just for our sixth graders, but for seventh and eighth graders as well. That's an important component to see if we can do. An additional component is to lengthen the day for those high school credit-bearing classes for our middle school kids. Right now, a high school student is going to see additional class time hours per year than our middle school students. And so the discussion is, is it fair that, you know, if, if my son is taking Spanish at the junior, he might be getting, he would be getting more time than my seventh grade student at a middle school. So how do we bridge that gap and make that more equitable? Finally, there's a desire to exceed the state requirement of 140 hours for all of our high school credit-bearing classes. Now, we, we meet that now, but the state of Virginia requires that all high school credit-bearing classes meet at least 140 hours. And so the, the desire really is, can we extend that so that if there is inclement weather or an unforeseen day where we must not have school, can we make sure we have even a bigger cushion than we currently do? So those are the three big questions that was asked. And because those questions were being asked, we thought we need to develop, develop a committee. And so a committee was developed at the beginning of this year, actually, in August, September. They, it's a total of 25 members. Now, eight of those members are from our, our parents, two from each of our middle schools. 10 of those members are from our schools, all four principals, counselors, teachers, and other staff. And the remaining seven are school board office staff. And that includes finance and our human resources folks. The objective of the committee was to recommend a middle school, a middle school bell schedule that best meets the needs of our kids in YCSD. So that's all the work that we've already completed. This, we've already had four meetings from September all the way, we had two meetings in November. And the first thing they did was review focus feedback from focus groups. So at the end of last year, I met with a total of 12 groups, three from each of our middle schools, that include students, teachers, and parents. And I basically asked them, you know, what do you like and what do you dislike about the current block schedule? And if you could, what would you do differently in a new schedule? And obviously, some of the student answers were very different than our teacher answers, but I think as great feedback regardless. We wanted to make sure we saw what those kids wanted and what those parents and teachers wanted. So the committee looked at that, at that information. In addition, we looked at, the committee looked at bell schedules from our neighboring divisions. We wanted to see like, what else is out there? We want to see what other divisions we're using for the middle school bell schedules. In addition, the committee wanted to administer a survey. They wanted a bigger population than just, we had about 100 people that I, that I did the focus groups with. So they, so we sent it out to all of our middle school staff and all of our families of fifth graders, sixth graders, seventh graders, and eighth graders. And I'll tell you, I was very impressed. We had 125 responses from our families and 130 from our staff. And the committee looked at all that information. One of the questions was to look at some of the criteria that they were reviewing for the schedules and get feedback on that. The other question really surrounded their thoughts about the current schedule.
Dr. Sherlock, I thought it was more than 100 from our families.
I'm sorry, did I say 830 from our families? I'm sorry, did I misspoke? I apologize. I think I flipped those numbers. So is it 835?
He was hypocritical with Bill.
I know, we had a very large, um, really-
No, yeah, I would not be impressed with 130. Maybe, maybe I'm hypocritical. But 835 from our families, and that was pretty equally distributed between our fifth, our fifth graders had the biggest number, our families.
Right.
And then 130 from our staff. So I apologize for forgetting this number. Again, so the committee took all that information, all that data, and they conducted a TRAGO Ed decision analysis. And we do those when a big decision is necessary, where we want to take in lots of different points and make a decision or recommendation based on that. So that's what we do. We spent two meetings looking at the TRAGO Ed decision analysis. And you see some pictures there of the actual process itself. And the first thing we did was establish criteria. And this criteria really said, you know, what is important about our middle school schedules? What do we want to weigh the different schedules against? We also placed weights on each of those criteria, from one to 10. 10, of course, being very important, one being not so important. And again, so we assigned those weights and we assigned the criteria, and the committee chose three different options for schedules. They chose our current middle school bell schedule or a block schedule. We always said we want to include that block schedule with, with whatever protocol we used. We included our YCSD high school schedule, the one that is currently in our high schools. And we included a schedule that was a block but had shorter 45-minute periods that you could fit into that 90-minute block. So it could allow more options for those kids, right? And so we did, we looked at those three schedules and we evaluated them using the decision analysis protocol. And the results were the, that block with the shorter periods wound up as a first choice or ranked, ranked number one. Number two was a high school schedule, and number three was our middle school schedule. Now, that does not mean that we went with those results. Our next step, where we are right now, is we have to make sure that what's on paper for a schedule, it, it doesn't always mean that it's going to work perfectly with our student course selections and with our staffing. So we're building matching schedules right now for our high school and our block with those shorter periods. And we're using our current course, student course information along with staffing to see what, to see what that looks like. Again, it might look perfect on paper, but when you apply our course recommendations and staffing, it might, it might not work very well. So we're doing that right now. Also, at the school sites, admin teams and counseling teams are looking at some of the barriers that might happen, as far as maybe some tougher student schedules, just some things that we, we wanted a bigger team at the school sites to look at as far as potential barriers and opportunities for those different schedules. And then we are looking at staffing and other resources that would be needed to implement these schedules. If you have more English classes, you're going to need somehow more English teachers or more English classes, right? So we're looking at those different options. The next step that we're going to be coming to is January 23rd, we'll reconvene that middle school committee, where the team of the committee will look at all that information, including referencing the, the scores that were determined from the DA, from the decision analysis. And they'll conduct a potential opportunity and a potential problem analysis to see, again, let's, let's weigh what we found are the potential barriers and the opportunities to see what we want to recommend. And that recommendation will go into the superintendent with a goal of February. And that's where we are with our middle school schedule. I open, I'm open to any questions or comments at this time.
Just a quick question. So the need for change, like to research this change of schedule, is it triggered by some kind of data on performance of students, or is this kind of like, no, we're thinking it's about time to just kind of look at that?
It's a great question. So, I mean, I was used to, I mean, I taught in a six, six-day period, I, I went to a six-day period. So I think the matter that it's only been 15 years doesn't mean we have to change it. But what we found is two big reasons. One, with incoming snow days and that kind of, and unforeseen-
Hurricane.
Hurricane, yes. I haven't experienced one myself here yet, but I hope never to, but we'll see. We want to make sure we have the cushion with our, with high school credit-bearing classes. Right now, the students do have eight hours of online learning time to make sure we have that cushion, which is about five days. But we really want to see if we can't put that in in-class time. And again, when you have eight, eight periods, eight, eight classes versus, let's say, the high school seven, you're going to have less time in those classes. So we're seeing what we can do with that, with that schedule. Also, oh, I can say, also, the desire really is to see if we can't have daily English for those kids. We see our scores, and SOLs are just one data point, but we see those scores for sixth graders as, as higher than our seventh and eighth graders. Now, being a middle school person, I know that seventh graders and eighth graders are very different than our sixth graders, but we want to make sure we exhaust every avenue, make sure we give those kids every opportunity we can to have that English class. So really, those are two big reasons behind looking at the schedule.
We, we are also looking at improving and increasing our writing outcomes for students. It's something the state has also talked across the state. There's, there's some concern regarding that. There's a lot of work right now, they're changing the assessments for writing for our students. And so we want to make sure that this is one way that we can really give our students more instructional time to focus on the holistic view of English, which includes writing, reading, vocabulary development, all of those things, so.
That's good.
I like it.
Yeah. Is there an actual return on investment stat that says, has anybody ever done it of this particular schedule has, you know, this percentage of students who are succeeding at or above grade level versus this one, although everybody likes it, it's not producing the desired result?
So I, so I presented, I presented the board of the committee with quite a few research articles and, you know, dissertation, that kind of thing. And there was, it was inconclusive, really, which I hate saying that, but it was really inconclusive as far as, is it like the, the frequency, like having a seventh period day? Or is it the length of class? And so there was a little bit of evidence that shared, that showed that the blocks had less behavioral and less tardies, which makes sense, you have less periods between those, you know, for the kids to transition. But there wasn't a whole lot of evidence as far as if you do this schedule, this will happen. And, and I'll be honest, a tough thing with schedules is there's so many variables. Like, we looked at what we call three shells. Well, within those shells, you can have quite a few different variations. And so it's tough to look at all those different, those different areas. So maybe that's why, if I haven't found any information about that, maybe that's why, because there are so many different variables on that.
Any additional questions for Dr. Sherlock?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that, that concludes all of our presentations for this evening.
Send to close, yes. So are there any further questions from anyone? Want to take the opportunity to thank all of the presenters. You all did a, a great job in answering the questions and fielding our questions and comments and, and things like that. And, hang on, we'll probably have more coming down the line. But as well as, you know, as we field from the constituents and parents saying, you know, can you ask this for me? We'll be doing that, so I hope you don't mind, but it's going to be what's going on. Now, we have coming up in the agenda, a closed meeting session. Let's see, Mrs. Ford, if you could read-
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion-
Okay, thank you, Mr. Richardson.
-to send a closed session. I would like to make a motion, New York County School Board meeting closed session pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.237 11A, 8 of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act for the consultation with legal counsel employed by the public body regarding review of current litigation and administrative actions, personnel investigations, and board member FOIA obligations regarding social media and all such matters requiring the provision of legal advice of such counsel. Second.
Okay, the motion was made by Mr. Richardson, seconded by Mr. Schaefer. Any discussion? The one question that I had on here was, I understand that court cases have said that just stating legal advice can't be moved into closed session. And so I was curious on the board member FOIA obligations regarding social media, wouldn't that be a discussion for everyone? Is there a particular reason that it needs to be in closed session?
Uh, yes, because it's too specific individuals, and so it's, take it out of the open session into the closed session, and it's specific instances.
Oh, okay. I think it just needed that particular clarification. Any other questions or discussions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we will now go into closed session. Thank you very much.